So we're on. Okay. I would like to welcome everybody to the Georgetown Planning Board February 24th, 2016 hearing. We're in Memorial Town Hall, third floor conference room. And before we begin, I would like to just make a real quick note. You may or may not be aware, but our town planner has moved on. And this will be our first meeting without our town planner. And I want to make special mention to Andrea and the incredible amount of work that she has been doing behind the scenes to help pull this off. So there's a lot of effort going on right now that people don't see. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Howard as well. Howard is a person who you talk to at lunchtime, you talk to at night, and he's also involved. So anyways, with that said, we do not have any meeting minutes tonight. As far as correspondence goes, I'm just simply going to outline the correspondence. There's a letter from, with regards to the Healthy Farms Project. There is a letter from John Connolly, special permit proposed conditions from the abutter suggestions. There's two letters from the Georgetown Police Department. There is a response packet from the attorney for the applicant. There is in the, let's see, there is also another letter which I want to hand out to you all tonight. I had a phone conversation with Don Cudmore this morning. And basically, it was his last, I wanted to try to wrap up this issue of safety and police and communication with towns and try to get a better handle on... So this is for everybody and Andrea and I suppose anyone else who needs a copy. So that's just correspondence to enter into when we get to that part of the agenda. There's a letter in here and then other projects, historical commission with regards to the Two Tenney Street project. There's a correspondence with the erosion and stormwater bylaw from the town of Georgetown and an email from the conservation agent with regards to the same. There's a ZBA decision from the town of Georgetown. There's a town, two town of Bauxford zoning board of appeals correspondence. And then there is a correspondence from Attorney John Eichman who is present this evening. And that is with regards to the National Avenue A and R which comes up later in the agenda. For vouchers, moving on to vouchers, we have two that we approved previously but we didn't sign. And then we have four that are new and I guess, and they were this time, we don't have a summary of all of them, so we're going to just go through each one and do it that way, okay? Put this aside. The first voucher was for $530. Public hearing notice, erosion, stormwater notice. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater. Deal with me, sir. Yeah. Thank you. For North Boston Media Group totaling $530.25.
Second.
So a motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher for the public hearing notice of the erosion and stormwater bylaw with the North Boston Media Group and the amount of $530.25. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And you have, Tilly's got the signatures going there. We are probably going to proceed a little bit more cautiously this evening, so. You're all there with us.
Is that the next one?
And the next one is, the next voucher, this is Two Tenney Street.
Okay. I have to recuse from that.
Okay. So I need a motion from somebody for the Two Tenney Street Palmer Lane.
For $1,320. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and been seconded to approve the voucher for Two Tenney Street Palmer Lane in the amount of $1,320. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, would you please let the record reflect that Harry Lockitney recused from that vote?
So noted.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pay the legal ads for Chapter 57 and 40 R overlay in the amount of $26.72.
Second.
Motion has been made and been seconded to approve the legal ads for Chapter 57 and 40 R overlay in the amount of $26.72. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the last one, which is one that is new for tonight, is in the amount of $215 for the 2016 Mass Land Court reporter subscription renewal.
Mr. Chairman, the landlord subscription renewal, 2016 land court reporter, $215.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the 2016 Mass Land Court reporter subscription renewal in the amount of $215. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous on, oh, sorry, wrong one. It's unanimous in that. And then, we have two that we have previously approved. We just need to sign these, but I think for the record, I'm just going to read them in. So, the last planning board meeting, it was for $820 for Maureen Lane. And that was approved at the last meeting, so we're looking for just signatures on that. I'll get this to you. And the other previously approved voucher from the last meeting was for $100 for postage for the meter. And again, that was previously approved. We're just signing this voucher this evening. This is the Maureen Lane. That'll take care of the vouchers. So next on the agenda is the A and R plan for national AV. And my understanding is they are here tonight with a revised MYLAR. Is that correct?
Yeah, the revision to the MYLAR includes a note that says endorsement of this plan shall not be an indication of conformance of zoning.
Okay. And there was another revision to the plan that was asked, requested. It had something to do with the title block, but I don't remember what that was.
The removal of the word subdivision of land.
Oh, yeah.
Subdivision of.
That was it.
Because it's an A and R, it's not a subdivision. That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
That was not conveyed to me. I apologize. I was not here at the last meeting.
Okay. Do we have any issues with timing with this?
You need an extension.
Signatures? Do we need an extension?
Yeah, 21 days. Motion to deny. Our only resolution at this point.
What do you mean? You can have an extension?
Can I see the plan?
If town council says it's good to go with that title block, then I'm going to be okay with that. Thanks for speaking up, John.
Yeah, I mean, it's clearly got the endorsement, approval on the subdivision control not required here. So, with the board's approval, I wouldn't have an objection to actually say subdivision. It's clearly not being endorsed as a definitive plan, so there wouldn't be any mistake about that. It doesn't block.
Does it matter that subdivision is 1956? Does that matter at all?
What's 1956?
Yeah, that's way up here. We're here. One of these plans, the original subdivision, I believe, was from a definitive plan dated 1990. Yeah, do you have a reading?
Oh, the National Avenue right here?
Yeah. Does it matter?
No. No, that's the... It's a title reference essentially.
Yeah, the reference for the parcel only and not the revision.
All right. And what's your...
Well, I thought we had already reviewed all this. We only had two changes.
You didn't review anything.
This was good, Dave. The last meeting, we went over the plan and reviewed it and we had the two comments that were adding to that note to the block.
A lot of discussion about this, but I don't recall this.
With regards to this, let me, you all had in your packet in the correspondence, I know that the question came up with regards to the land and adequacy of frontage.
Right.
So, I hope you've all read in the correspondence that you all received and I'm just going to say it. And this is from John Eichman to Howard, our town planner. "I agree with you, the land being divided by the A and R plan is Lot 8 on LC Plan 26719D. That land does not include number zero Main Street and thus the adequacy of the frontage of zero Main Street is not before the planning board with this plan." Separate that, and that's the punchline. "Separation of ownership may create a zoning issue with respect to zero Main Street, but that will be a matter for zoning enforcement officer as necessary."
Okay.
So that was the only other issue that I recall coming up at that time.
And in other words, we're doing three A and Rs or one?
We're just doing the one.
Just one? We're not doing these?
Correct. We're just doing the one.
Okay.
A and R creates three lots.
Huh?
One A and, one endorsement that creates three lots.
This triangle, that is the original eight.
All right. But I kind of thought that it was this sliver that's abutting National Ave that was going to be removed. And that's, that was one, two, three. That's how I was looking at this.
That's how the whole lot evidently goes at this point. Eight.
Well, you've got 8B, 8C, and 8A.
That's how they chopping it up. And that's how the successor likes it.
So with this approval, we're approving all of them?
We're approving these lines and...
We're approving the new line that they're putting in, which is the A and R plan.
This one. And that one.
No, that already exists.
That one already exists, correct.
This one is, this one is over here.
The lines that were really approved in here is this one here.
It's this here.
And this one here.
And this one. Lot 8C, 8B, and 8. Right?
Yeah. They're taking lot eight and they're making A, B, and C out of it.
Okay. Wait.
I was when I looked at a floor.
I don't have to withdraw my motion because it never got seconded.
Okay. Do you, what I was going to do is, let me put these back on Andrea and she will include them in our next packet.
It runs like this. This is, it's that odd, looks like a handle on a spade. You're dividing that lot into three parcels. One would be an actual lot here and then you've got two non-buildable parcels here.
They stay.
8C, 8B. Right, everything stays where it is, but now you're going to have two parcels, a new property line here and a new line here. Those are the two new lines.
And that lot eight was created by the board in 2003? I have the previous A and R plan.
Oh, okay.
See, it's your fault.
I wasn't here then.
So...
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
If you'll hear it, I make a motion to endorse the, the form a lot entitled subdivision plan of land in Georgetown. Gated revised February 24th. Hayes Engineering, signed by Thomas Winslow.
Second.
So a motion has been made and it's been seconded by Tilly with the approval of subdivision plan, the A and R plan titled subdivision plan, Georgetown Mass, prepared by Hayes, Hayes Engineering, Inc., dated revised February 24th, 2016. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Aye. If it would be all right with you, we have a pretty full agenda tonight. If you could leave the MYLAR, we'll sign it. Probably, that would help us a lot. Okay. Thank you. So, so now we're going to move into public hearings. We have three tonight. We have special permit Healthy Farms. We then have number, the second one is the zoning bylaw amendment for Chapter 57, stormwater and erosion control. And the third public hearing is the definitive subdivision application for Two Tenney Street. Excuse me. So with that, if the applicant for Healthy Farms wants to come forward...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move on.
And if I could get a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing for Healthy Farms special permit, continued from January 27.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to open the special hearing, special permit hearing, continued from January 27th for Healthy Farms special permit. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, what we're going to do tonight is give you folks an opportunity first to respond how you would like to respond to the information. If you want to go over each of your responses, that's, that's up to you. So I'm going to leave it up to you. And then we're going to go to the public. And then we have our technical review agent here this evening, Larry Graham, to hopefully, I know there were a couple outstanding issues, to see if we can come to terms with those. And then we'll bring it back to the planning board. And I think the challenge to the planning board is going to be, based on all the information that is here, is the planning board going to feel comfortable as you're getting this information, closing the public hearing, so that we can move into the next phase of the project? So that's what you've got to kind of keep in mind, or we'll be continuing the hearing again to the next meeting. So with that...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Valerio Romano, as you know, Paul Overgag and Matt Avril, founders of Healthy Farms. So I realize the board has given me discretion as to how I want to approach the responses, but, and so maybe it's most appropriate for me to try to run through them quickly. I understand you have three public hearings tonight. So at any point, obviously cut me off, shorten me up, whatever, whatever you like, and I'll try to be as quick as possible.
Feel comfortable with it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great. So as we've done after the previous hearings, we put together a memorandum with exhibits. And this one was, was sort of luminous. We have, you know, in the past, we've seen that there's been a lot of thoughts and concerns with different aspects of the project. So the goal here was to try to address them all in sort of an omnibus presentation for the board, hopefully try to get close to the closing of the public hearing. And to that end, so we put together this letter with a number of attachments. And I'll just quickly run through the different comments and what we hope resolves the different comments. And of course, you know, we have Anthony Capocetti here from Hayes Engineering here. Here, Tony. And Tony will of course speak to any of the engineering issues that we get to. So, the first one is from the Raleigh Town Planner, Kurt Baker. And the issue there was the potential that pulling out of the site and taking a left may be unsafe. And he asked the town of Georgetown or the applicant to consider installing a stop sign and a stop line. Tony, do you want to speak about that for a sec?
We, actually, we can install a stop sign and stop line. And we also submitted a statement from our traffic engineer. Said he reviewed the calculations and the site distances and has no issue. And while we were going through this, we went through Mr. Graham's original response letter where he said that he didn't see any issues with the site access either.
And I think Larry will get to him, but I think he's going to add something to that.
Okay. Great. Now, there was from the, from the nearby ABZ storage, Mr. Connolly, who's also here, presented written comments to the board, really requesting either amendments to the zoning bylaw or certain conditions that were largely, largely the same thing as some of the amendments. And, you know, I didn't know if it was entirely appropriate for us to go through all the requested amendments. I mean, I believe that the zoning bylaw passed by two-thirds at annual town meeting. I think that sort of speaks for itself. And I was going to leave that to the board as to, you know, what to do with all the proposed amendments. I know, you know, one of the issues was notice. This was sort of a recurring theme throughout Mr. Connolly's letter to the board, that Healthy Farms, whenever we have to provide notice to Georgetown Police Department or Georgetown Town Department, we also supply it to any, any abutters or neighbors within 300 feet. And I mean, there's just a whole bunch of reasons why I didn't think that was necessarily appropriate. I know that there had been some conversation with Chief Cudmore regarding even notifying Raleigh Police Department. And I wasn't sure if that was met with unanimous support or support from the Georgetown Police Chief. And I certainly think that just someone, a business in Raleigh, which is who are essentially talking about the ABZ storage, I'm not sure if they have any more right to notice than necessarily Raleigh Police Department would. So I don't think I'm going to belabor that too much.
And I think this is an opportune time. I had spoken, I saw in your report, you had several, in your response, several times you had said, you know, have a discussion with Don Cudmore. And so I did that this morning. And he responded with a letter and an email today, which I handed out as an exhibit. And if there was one extra, is there one, could you get, but I'm going to just read this one paragraph into the public record for you, which I think will, will address what you're talking about. And in the second paragraph, it says, "It is my opinion that this requirement," and let me back up, "with regards to the issue," and I'm paraphrasing, "notifying the Raleigh Police Department or the abutters," with regards to this issue. "It is my opinion that this requirement is not necessary as there is already mutual aid agreements in place between the respective police and fire departments concerning any public safety response to the 401 East Main Street location. This redundant requirement would not expedite nor assist our departments in any way as each call for service is analyzed at the time it is received for the required assets needed for the issue identified. Additionally, the respective departments have a very clear, a very active relationship relative to our boundary properties and often share necessary response needs. An example would be the storage location in Raleigh where both the police and fire departments have assisted the Raleigh departments with responses at that location in the past requests." So that was, I think, in direct response to this issue.
I think it is. So I'll probably let that one, you know, I don't think I need to speak further on that. And I appreciate the chief chiming in in a written letter. I got to say, as far as the chief has been concerned, he has been so, you know, just open and accessible. We've had multiple meetings with him. He's gone through our security plans. He's had comments on them. He's asked about them in detail that we didn't necessarily think of. And Nat has been, taken the lead on that, has, you know, been in communication with the chief. I mean, he's just really been, you know, a great partner and we don't even have a special permit yet. So I got to say, if, if this all works out as we hope it does, I look forward to working with Chief Cudmore. He's really been great. Okay. So, you know, I'm not going to go, I'll just, I'll let that go. So now we're on, you know, there's, there's some other sort of recurring themes to the ABZ and Mr. Connolly's request. And, you know, I think for the balance of them, I'm going to leave them to the discretion of the board. I don't think that, you know, I need to belabor most of those. Okay. So the next one is the concerns that were expressed by Mr. Watts. And I think you echoed Raleigh Water Department concerns. And it, to that, yes. Yeah. So, okay, yeah, go ahead, please, Tony.
So what we did was, we analyzed the nitrogen loading on the septic system. We based it on the most nitrate heavy fertilizer they would use, which is during the flowering period. And that's a 1% solution. Basically, we took that and we used the MASTDPs guidelines for doing nitrogen aggregation for your loading at the property line, which is something you would do for a new septic system had it been proposed, nitrogen sensitive area. It's not something that we're obligated to do, but we said if we can meet this standard, we feel that we can prove to the board that we're doing the right thing here. So we took that nitrogen loading, we added that to the standard loading that they give you for the waste stream. And then we looked at the area over the septic system and heading down gradient, following what we felt was the groundwater flow distance to the down gradient property line. And they allow you to take dilution of 18 inches of rainfall over the course of the year on that area. And then the cutoff is if you exceed 10 milligrams per liter, then you need to do something to remove the nitrogen. The loading we came up with was 7.8 milligrams per liter at the property line. And, you know, that was using a 5% bypass on the plants. When we're watering these plants, half a gallon per plant per day during the most intensive watering period, if 5% was to get by and go into the drain. Then we, we looked at that analysis again and we said, well, you know, we feel 5% is a conservative number, but how much could we go to, you know? We were sure the question would be, well, how do you know 5%? How do you know 10? You could go almost up to a third of the water. So this is a business that's not going to be that wasteful, where a third of the water is going to bypass these plants. They're hand-watered or drip-watered. They're going to be observed and they're in tray tables and then that volume will be collected before it's discharged, so we can monitor the volume per month and log that in.
Bob, what I'm thinking is, so we don't go back and forth right now, is that, so there's the answer. And then when we come back to the planning board in the end, if you need to go back to these issues, if you...
Okay, great. The next one was the planning board comments, which were actually attached to our January 17 letter as Exhibit A. They were to be reviewed by Mr. Graham, Graham and Associates. So I guess we have a time to, Mr. Graham's going to address that, so we'll keep going. We also, there was a request, again, still from Mr. Watts about further detail about our specific security. And so to that end, I put together, I believe it's attached as Exhibit C to the submission is, you know, it goes through all the different security sections that are required by the Department of Public Health's regulations.
Yep.
And, you know, and so we talked, we tried to put together a brief response and resolution as to how Healthy Farms would address each one of those security sections. Of course, there's a thoughtfulness about not putting, you know, actual private security information out into the, into the public domain. So that's why we didn't just attach our security manual, which Nat and the Healthy Farms team has reviewed with Chief Cudmore on more than one occasion. And Nat Avril's also provided him updates when we updated it for the department. So that's been done. But I wanted to make sure that there was some understanding about the thoroughness of the security requirements at the Department of Public Health level and how we're addressing those. I hope that helps to respond to some of your concern, Mr. Watts. So then there was the next issue, you know, sort of studies about legal issues surrounding dispensaries. And so we attached a couple of actual studies there. One of them was, was a study that basically, and these are independent studies, this isn't normal Americans for Safe Access. The second one actually is ASA, but the first one, the effect of medical marijuana law is on crime, evidence from state panel data. And then that concluded that these findings run counter to argument... And then that concluded that these findings run counter to arguments suggesting the legalization of marijuana for medical purposes poses a danger to public health in terms of exposure to violent crime and property crimes. So that, that was the conclusion of that study. It's attached to our, our submission. Then the next, and this is something I had referenced portions of.
Could I interrupt for just a second? We have a meeting downstairs that is about ready to start. There may be people up here on the historical commission or at that. We have a, amazing for that one, so that's downstairs. Anyone that may have come up here on this day.
Thank you, Ed. You got one.
Yeah.
So then that second study that I attached, or the second paper that I attached is Exhibit E. I had referenced portions of in the past. I believe Mr. LaCortilia, you know, said, what's the site for these and where are they from? So I just attached the whole thing to this. And it was actually, Americans for Safe Access did a study of the medical use of marijuana program in Massachusetts, right, when, at its inception. And this was, and when they went back and they talked about crime, crime largely anecdotal, but also statistical from California and Colorado, and that's here as well. And you have, you have things like the chief, LA Police Chief saying banks are more likely to get robbed. And so that, that's there as well. The next is notifying Rowley Police of any incidents. I think we've gone over that with Chief Cudmore's letter. Number eight on page three is the concern about nitrates and fertilizers in the wastewater. This is still thoughts that Mr. Watts had. And what fertilizers are being applied to plants, estimated discharge volumes, and how such discharge can be monitored. Speak to that further.
No, I think that was.
Is that covered?
Covered in the report.
Excuse me for interrupting. Before you go further, I just wanted to back up and, and point out for the public, because I think it's information that the public might find really very helpful. And it has to do with that, that journal that you, "The Effect of Medical Marijuana Laws on Crime: Evidence from State Panel Data, 1990 to 2006." This is a, this looks to be a peer-reviewed article. So the point is that there's some pretty good science behind this. Now, it's just one paper, but nonetheless, if you're interested, it, it's public record now. We have this information. I highly recommend you get a copy and read it, and you might be surprised with what you find.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to avoid too much detail.
Understand, understand. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, so number eight, you think we've touched on enough? And it's all, it's in the report that's attached? Okay. And then further description on the, on the fence. So I believe that fence locations.
We added some notes to the revised plans, basically stating what type of fence, what to do if it's repaired, what's, what to do if it's replaced. And the, that the note is that the whole site should be enclosed with a six-foot-high minimum chain link fence. Because there is a small section that's eight-foot-high.
This is black vinyl clad chain link, and it's on Sheet C4, where it points out the areas. And the, the next one is, what are the regulatory boundaries of the town versus the state? And so to respond to this one, I cited directly the Massachusetts Regulations 105 CMR 725 dot 600, which state that ARMD and other registered persons shall comply with all local rules, regulations, ordinances, and bylaws. The department does not mandate any involvement by municipalities. And if you go through the regs, you can see that there's a reason they don't mandate it because the regs are incredibly thorough and robust. And, you know, the, the operators, and as you know, I work with many groups around the state, we welcome the, the input from, from the municipalities. But in the event that some say, well, I trust the department, you know, there, there's so much there. And so, and so nothing in 105 CMR 725 shall be construed as to prohibit lawful local oversight and regulation, including fee requirements, does not, that does not conflict or interfere with the operation of, of the regs. So, so that's there, and I, I hope that helps to resolve it. So the next concerns from, are from Mr. LaCortilia. And they, the, the first one of those is floor drains, truck bay drains, and where do drains go, if so?
So the floor drains and truck bay drains, we submitted a plan that shows where they were based off of a ground penetrating radar study. Basically, most of them have been sealed up. There's a couple in the truck bay area that will be sealed. They will add some floor drains per code in the employee restroom area and shower area, locker room area. And those do discharge to the sanitary septic.
Okay, so list of all chemicals used or stored in amounts greater than five gallons?
So we prepared a, a pretty thorough document that not only included the list of chemicals, a safety plan, and MSDS sheets.
I assume you've read it all?
Yeah.
That's attached as Exhibit G.
The MSDS is that's such a rather difficult file, basically. I just have a question about two of them, but we'll go back to that later.
And so then the, the bright light on the corner of the building.
Needs to be angled down to 30 degrees and, and specified, you know, to the correct wattage as shown on the lighting plan. But that, that issue should go away with me.
And there's, and you know, there's a few things. We just talked about, about the drains and, you know, filling some more in and potentially adding some more for the employee area. We talked about the light. You know, at the end, I, I would like to, the opportunity to maybe chat with the board about, you know, if, in the event this does go through, we do have a, a construction team that's sort of, you know, they're either going to come work for us or go find another job. And then I, and I know that's not the board's problem, but I want to talk to the board for a moment about potential of doing some of these things, you know, now, rather than later. But we, we can get to that. I just think it's an appropriate time now that we mentioned a few repairs in the building that need to be done. Getting that, getting that work done. So additional input from Chief Cudmore. So we had attached a, a letter from February 12th as Exhibit H. And then you also just supplied another letter from today from the chief. So I, I, that's the extent of the additional input that we had. I, I believe that Nat actually.
That's his third response. He also wished it was on February 5th.
Yes, it is, yeah. So, and we had that, I believe, included with something else, or we had seen it. So, so I think between the three responses, I know Nat had sat down with the chief also, and.
We gave him the latest updates on the security.
Yes, and talked to, you know, so we, we were approved, we did an architectural review submission with the Department of Public Health, which is part of the process. They go through your archi, architecture plans. And a lot of that is actually security stuff. They don't, they don't go to the engineering level that, that, that's happening here, you know, with the engineers. But they do go through all your floor plans, all your doors, exits, entrances, what your, all your, what are all your walls are made out of, the coving on the floors, what your floors are made out of, security cameras, access areas, limited access. They go through all that. They gave us a few pages of comments back and amendments. We made the amendments, we amended our plans with them. And some of those affected our security plans, so we wanted to make sure that we updated the chief as soon as we could. So Nat scheduled a meeting with him and drove up, and they sat down and went over it all. And then subsequent to that meeting, the chief issued the February 12th letter. I think that, that basically sums it up.
It does.
Okay. Infiltration basin 01 has no wear. And I, for myself, I pat myself on the back. I actually had spelled wear right in my notes last time, so I thought that was kind of cool. So Tony can speak to that a little bit.
We left it as a stillway. I found out that Mr. Graham had not received our prior responses. So he since reviewed those, and we've had some conversations, and when he gets to that, we'll address it.
So the, the next comment from Mr. Cortelia, and the last one that I had, was a detail of our proposed signs, including the stop sign. We've talked about the stop sign, and I think the signs are on Sheet C4.
We called out the locations. A couple of the signs, like the blind driveway sign that was suggested, we have no problem putting in, but it is the Mass Highway layout, so we'll consult with Mass Highway. And if they say we can put it in, we'll put it in. If they say no, we'll have at least tried to.
So the next comments that I have were from Mr. Evangelista. The first one was some additional information on the traffic analysis.
And again, we submitted a, a letter basically supporting the, the traffic statements that we had from our traffic engineer that was stamped and signed.
That's, that was attached as Exhibit A. And then also a clarificate, a request for clarification of, about condensate from the AC and dehumidification, whether it's going to be recycled, water for the plants, and, you know.
Initially, the condensate will go out to the subsurface sanitary, the septic system, only because it's kind of an unreliable source of, of water. Once the operation's up and running and they can gauge how much they can, they will recover if they're going to explore using it for irrigation purposes.
About the planting, they're watering the plants. Over and above the air conditioning unit, it's the water that's going to be in this area.
The, the watering from the plants?
Yeah, to the plants, yeah.
They're going to be handled in tray tables, and that was in the, the nitrogen nitrate loading. There'll be about half a gallon per plant per day.
But doesn't the ad voc take out that moisture? How are you gonna? You have to keep it, you know, for, for the workers, I would think. You would need to have the air capable for them to manage to move. And that's what I think the ad voc is intended for.
I think, I think what I'd like to do, Tilly, is, is, is to hold that till we come back to the board because we have just so much to cover. And I'm afraid if we don't keep moving forward with air response and public, we won't ever get back to this stuff. So can you hold that till we come back to it?
What if I said no?
No, I'm kidding. He bogged us down with so much paperwork. We tried to remember it all.
You folks did a good job providing what was asked for.
We try to keep notes and, you know, and, and do so. So, you know, then we had talked about how many people will visit the site per day. We're at the number of 150, but that would include patients, caregivers, dozens of employees, deliveries, contractors, outside vehicles, outside vendors, excuse me. So that's sort of, that's the number. Tony, if you want to speak to a little bit about the, the relationship between that number and the number that it had at its height anyway, the building.
Yeah, the full build-out, the, the traffic projections for this building under the previous use were about 250 vehicles per day, or 257, I think.
257.
That's 257 vehicle trips per day. And that's be 512 trip ends. That's, you know, trip end starts from your house is one, and then the second one's where you arrive, and then when you leave. So.
So it'd be 500 and something.
Five, fourteen. That was when it was BMW, right?
That's correct. So this one would be 150 ins and outs for, for the site, or 158 based off of the traffic projections. So that's what we're looking at for daily. But that, like I, like we said, that includes the people who work there, the delivery vehicles. There's some anticipation for just drive-bys as well as patients.
And so, and, and this is a part where, you know, I do try to pride myself on taking good notes. But I think between Mr. Snyder and Mr. Hoover, I apologize, you're the chairman, and I think I had sort of mushed your comments together. So I couldn't tell exactly from my notes which one were Mr. Snyder's and which ones were yours, so that they're all under this next heading. And so, you know, further, bless you, Mr. LaCortelia.
Thank you.
Further clarity on, on water use. I think we've been over that a couple of times, and it's in the report.
And it's, the, the water usage was cleared through Lou Mamalat at the water department, so there is enough supply.
Okay. And I think there were some, some further calculations from Hayes as Exhibit B. And, but of course, I'll let the engineer speak to that. Now, there was a comment about a request for a sit-down with the Board of Health.
Deb Rogers was out the previous week, all week, so we were unable to, to sit down with her. I did speak to her on the phone. I provided the nitrogen calculations. We discussed the Title V inspection, and I asked her to get comments to the board if she had any. I don't know if she's.
I don't believe we've received anything at this point.
But based on my conversations with her, she didn't have any issues. She went through the Title V inspection and did sign off on it.
Bless you. Okay, then, so a further discussion, I'm meeting with Graham to sign off on triangle stop, Stein line traffic and whatnot. I know, I guess, I guess we'll all get to that in a little bit. Further information from Chief Cudmore, I know, has been provided. Then number 24 on page six, "Please add dimensions to the rain garden cross-section so the depth of each layer is understood."
And that was added to.
C3.
C3, which was, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you want, should we give Mr. LaCortelia a minute?
You have a core. You have a core.
We're okay.
So then photometrics are shown on the appropriate plan was a request.
And those are on, I believe, Sheet 5, Sheet 5, which was the light.
And then the final one was an updated plan set in hard copy in PDF format. I know I emailed a PDF format, a PDF set, and I believe it was dropped off as well.
Yes, seven. We all received those.
Okay, great. And that is, you know, I'm not going to run through all the exhibits. I believe we touched on them with the individual responses. But those are the 26 individual responses that, you know, based on all the information that I got, I thought was appropriate to, to include. And I think I did try to cover every single thing I heard from the board directly, like individually.
I think, I think we got most everything I'm aware of. So with that, is there anything else from, from your perspective at this point? And then, because if not, we're going to go to the public.
No, I think, I think that's it from us for now, yeah. But I'm sure there'll probably be a question or two for us, you know, before the night's up, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shall we excuse them, ask them, the public can ask questions?
I, what I'd like to do is, they can ask questions through the chair, depending on. But I'd like for the public to come up and do it that way, yeah.
I'll just sit right, right nearby, Mr. Connolly, in case the questions are for me.
So with that, I would like to move to the public. And anyone from the public, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and then come forward. Please, so we can hear you and if you could. Can you introduce yourself, please, for the record?
I'm an associate member of the planning board in Rowley, but I'm a neighbor. I wanted to know, in the beginning, you said something about monitoring the nitrogen. Who will be responsible for that monitoring? And where does that report go? Is there a report? Was one of the very first comments that the gentleman made.
We actually performed, we performed a calculation that's required by the state. If you were to build a new septic system within a zone two, they require you to do, if you're over 2,000 gallons a day, but less than 10,000, they're requiring you to do a nitrogen aggregation and calculation. And, and that's what we performed. And there's a DP, a set of guidelines that outlines the methodology that actually just came out during February 2016. And we followed that step by step. And what we did was we increased the, the nitrogen loading based off of the projected loads that would happen inside the building. So we augmented that, and then we ran the calculation. And what it does, it looks at what's, what's exiting the site, which would be downgrading the septic. If you don't have much area, because if you look at the septic systems, it's basically looking at what's, through this, this area over the systems and moving down gradient towards that property line. And it says, over the course of the year, they anticipate about 18 inches of rainfall will recharge. And that's what you're, you're allowed to dilute your loading. We did that dilution factor, and we come up to about 7.8 milligrams per liter exiting the site. They allow you also to aggregate land that you have under your control that will never be developed. We didn't take into account the fact that there's a state forest that goes beyond here that will never be developed, but we don't have control of it. So the dilution, once it gets to the, the actual well, would be significantly less than that. But we do meet the, the state requirement for new construction, which we are.
Okay, so it's not a physical monitoring?
No, but we, we have a volume that says that, you know, at our calculation rate, 10 milligrams per liter would occur if 32% of the irrigation water bypasses. We had an actual gallon volume that was in that report. And what we're going to do is, is monitor, you know, what comes off the table, collect them either in tables or some sort of vessel, and discharge them by hand into the drains. It's not going to be a collection system. They'll be in drip trays, and that drip tray will be emptied out and then added to the drain. It's, it's not gonna be a collection system, they'll be in drip trays, and, uh, that drip tray will be emptied out and then added to the drain, and, uh, what Healthie Fonz just said is just to, to add a, a, another level is, okay, we can discharge three hundred and sixty-seven gallons per day. Uh, we discharge, you know, five buckets or whatever, at five gallons a bucket, it was twenty-five gallons, or less than three, three sixty, we're all set. And the state doesn't have a nitrogen loading, uh, or nitrogen monitoring requirement unless you're over the ten milligrams per liter based on that calculation.
Uh, next from the public?
Hi. Is it my turn?
It's Connelly.
My name is Jay Connelly. I'm an attorney, I have an office in North Andover, and I represent the Byders, Dr. and Mrs. Abu Zara, who are with me. Just sort of, a general comment. I have heard a lot about projections. And I've heard nothing about monitoring and reporting on the results of what actually happens there. Uh, projections are great things, and they, and that's all you get to go with until somebody actually starts to run this business, but they're gonna be in control of their property, and they ought to be willing and able to answer that lady's question in the real world. He just said they were gonna collect the water and dump it out, but why not test it and tell us whether it's working or it isn't working?
I have that question written down.
Well, I beat you to it, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Same issue on, on the, I might, my, the traffic, I've heard it said repeatedly that the traffic at maximum, uh, operation on that property was somewhere in the order of five hundred round trips, two hundred and fifty, uh, vehicle visits a day, based on a traffic analysis of the structure and the property. Why didn't they count them? Why didn't they like, look at the actual business records? Dr. Abu Zara will tell you the actual traffic is gonna go up using their projections. Not that that's, I mean, that's not, that's, quite frankly, it's not much traffic no matter what way it goes. Not enough to turn anybody down, there's no percentage growth that's gonna matter. The question is, why is it that they don't wanna keep the town, the abutting town and the neighbors in tune with what's going on there? What's wrong with having, they gotta, if they gotta send a report to the state, what's wrong with having it sent to somebody who's next door, an incident report? What's wrong with it? Why is that so difficult? I, I just, I don't understand it. Um, I will say that, uh, out of the, out of the blue, I've, I, I guess out of this document, uh, the proponent has suggested or told you people that I was proposing amendments to the bylaw. Obviously, I, I hope maybe you've read it, I didn't propose amendments to the bylaw, I quoted a provision in the bylaw and highlighted something that I see as a weakness, and suggested a condition that would get you people around that weakness. The whole process, regulations, bylaws, you never get it right the first time, and you, it's not even fair to expect it. But when you have somebody come here and read to you from the regs twice now, and the regs encourage cities and towns to put conditions on, and he doesn't want them because of, they're so robust, state regs are robust, not for the town of Georgetown, they're not gonna necessarily suit the concerns of this, this board, they're not necessarily gonna, they can't. They gotta try, they gotta fit for the whole state, that's why they encourage local involvement. So, I'm not suggesting that these guys aren't gonna do what they say they're gonna do, I have no way of knowing. Maybe they'll be the best performers, they'll be wildly successful, everything will work out exactly right, I think that'd be wonderful. But I think it would be wise to at least plan for the chance that something might go wrong, and what do you do about it? Where's the enforcement? I mean, one of the things that's in here is they'll maintain the property, but it doesn't say what's gonna happen, and that's in the, the regs, it doesn't say what's gonna happen or in your bylaw, I guess, it doesn't say what's gonna happen if they don't. So it strikes me that that's kind of a big hole. That's why I suggested that you people put a condition on that says that the town will go in, if they don't do it, you go in and do it at their expense. And I think you are asking to ensure that somehow, bond it, maybe they could agree that you can put a lien on to get reimbursed. You, you don't know, you, I'm not saying, again, that there's anything wrong with what they're proposing or with the people who are proposing it, I don't know them. But I have been through a lot of wars over the years, some people come out and they're fantastic, they do everything they say they're gonna do. The business is run clean as a whistle. Some people have bad luck, and that leads to bad performance. Some people just don't do it, and that leads to bad performance. What is the town gonna do to protect itself and my client against bad performance? You know, there's a nuisance provision, there won't be a nuisance. As it happens, there's an easement that runs across my client's property. That easement has a provision in it that requires that his property be insured by the present owner of the abutting property where these people are going in. Against liability, inconvenience, I don't remember the exact language, essentially nuisance, but damages that arise out of the use of the easement. We've never seen an insurance policy, my client's never seen an insurance policy, it's been fifteen, twenty years.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question at this point?
Please.
So you have legal remedies available to you at law, if that even easement exists?
Oh, uh, you, you know, I don't, I don't.
I guess I don't understand why that's an issue for the planning board, if that's, if you have already those legal remedies available to you.
Uh, well, you know, do you really, really think it's a good idea to go to court over all these things when this board has the ability to avoid it? I'm trying to give you the legal remedies that you don't have.
I don't think it's appropriate for this board to interfere between the responsibilities between you and, and the.
Well, I, I, I'll take that to heart, I, I wasn't asking you to interfere, I was giving you background information of something that I know to be the case. So, uh, first of all, I don't propose any amendments to anybody's bylaws. Uh, I don't think it's an authorized to ask, and I wrote it, and Amanda, so that if these people don't wanna receive the notice, they don't have to send it, my guy will write and say he wants to receive it, make no mistake about that. But it's up to you. But to go through some of these things on a case-by-case basis, the definitions in, in the bylaw are weak, they always are, that's what the finishing factor is for. And to have the term permit holder or applicant be the, who's gonna have this, and not control somehow that these people, HP, is gonna be the one who gets this special permit, they had to be vetted personally through the state, and if they're gonna change hats, or they're gonna turn around and try to sell this thing, the new buyer should go through the same process through you. I think that's something that you should consider putting in your decision, and it's lacking in the, in the bylaw in terms of a, a definition. Unauthorized access, they say to authorized personnel, but they don't say what authorized personnel is. This is your bylaw. I would suggest that you might wanna consider having some provision in your conditions that require that authorized personnel be named, either by position or by actual name, so that you have that information available, and you can make sure that you can enforce this. In the absence of that, you'll, you'll never be able to enforce a violation, clearly you'll never be able to demonstrate that there was one. The nuisance issue we already spoke about. Uh, incident reports, again, uh, they're supposed to, the incident reports, I don't think even has a provision in, in the state reg that requires it be reported to you. It has to be reported to the state, but not to you. To me, if I were in Georgetown, I'd like to know about that at the same time as the state. Same thing if there's a summary cease and desist order issued, same situation, they get closed down by the state and you people don't know about it? I mean, I, and I can't imagine that they would object to having to tell, I, I hope not, they're talking about this great partnership with the police department, I hope the partnership extends to simple courtesy. In terms of, again, the current applicant, that the thing, the permit laps if they stop operating, well, there should be a time limit, I mean, they, they shouldn't be able to stop operating and just have it lie there dormant. Uh, there should be time, some timeframe, and it should lapse. And it should have to, you should, they should have to go through, or a success, you should have to go through the process to get it revived, it shouldn't just be a, they could turn the switch on and off.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, just, this, this, I read through all your points very well, thank you, I'd like to just say thank you, thank you very much, on behalf of the board.
Okay.
For what you've done, especially with the definitions, very, very good advice. Um, I can tell you, I can tell you've never read one of our special permits, because a number of the things that you're cautioning us about are in our special permit.
I haven't been called on to do that.
All I can say is, trust us.
Um, well, I do, actually, that's why I'm here. Uh, so I guess that having been said, I, I, if you've gone through them, I guess I'll just offer myself up to questions or comments that any of you or anybody else has on them, anybody who's, who's read them. If there are any, if there aren't, that's fine, I'll stop. I, I did make my, oh. I think I'm good, made the point about the traffic analysis, which I still don't understand. The fence, I'd like to ask about the fence, um, and I, that was something I was gonna do no matter what tonight. Perhaps, um, the applicant could point out exactly what area on the plan is gonna be fenced by the, uh, six-foot and someplace eight-foot fence.
Going across here, there'll be a security gate, the fence comes up, runs around the back of the property. Uh, there's another security gate here, uh, that's a manual gate, automatic, and that's existing, from the back around, runs along, and around the property, or it'll close back.
So essentially, it's a full perimeter fence?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one else from the public, um, I think I'd like to go to technical review agent, the honorable Mr. Graham.
Uh, I sent a letter to the board, uh, dated today's date, and that was in response to, um, a Hays engineering letter of December second. With some revised plans, which were in response to my November nineteenth letter.
That's in your supplemental package, board members? Larry Graham's letter?
And, uh, with the permission of the board, I will just, uh, hit the items which I felt needed a bit more, uh, polishing or discussion or, uh, uh, advice to the board. Under site access, uh, number two, I had previously stated that the applicant should file with MassDOT for a change in use of the existing curb cut. Uh, I still suggest that the board request the applicant to query MassDOT in regard to proposed change in use concerning, and I'll quote, "The creation of a change in the type, pattern, or timing of traffic that is determined by Mass Highway to generate a significant impact on traffic flow and safety." Further, I say that if MassDOT comes back to the board, or to them and back to the board, that there is no substantial increase, then I would suggest to the board that that item is then cleared. Under onsite vehicular traffic circulation and pavement condition, um, their response was, um, somewhat, well, the, the, the bylaw doesn't have any specific requirements under a special permit that the board can say, we want you to have a, a nice pavement surface, a good pavement surface, well-paved surface. And my response to that is that there's plenty of, of language within your bylaws that would require a good paved surface to control drainage, to control dust, to, to land parking for appropriate, uh, parking numbers that we've heard here tonight. So, my suggestion is that the applicant commit and agree to, with the board, to any proposed condition, uh, to make an improvement to the site paving, uh, because it is in pretty poor condition right now. Under parking and loading.
Larry, on a scale of one to ten, ten being brand-new, under per spec, planned spec, and zero being it, there's no pavement at all, I mean, we're, we're.
We're, we're in the middle there somewhere.
Okay.
Bobby. Under parking and loading, number two is, is somewhat of an editorial, I think in, in, um, Hays's response, they used a, a, a number of fifty-four spaces in one, at one point should be fifty-two. Uh, also, there was a bit of a disconnect between their latest revised plans, I believe, and their December letter with resp, with respect to the area of the industrial use, um, uh, forty-four thousand four oh six, uh, in the letter, forty-one oh thirty-one in the plans. Uh, that should be corrected. Under fencing and lighting, there's a misspell on the sheet five of lighting. Um, there is no lighting shown on the eight parking spaces in the southwesterly area of the site, and they're actually using those eight spaces as, as spaces that would be, uh, uh, available to employees and our, uh, people coming to the site. That should be lighted, and I believe the intensity of the lighting should come up a notch at the main entrance gate and perhaps at that westerly most center, uh, part of the site where that gate that, um, was just referred to on the plan. Uh, in addition, uh, I believe, and I didn't double-check, but the first architectural plans I looked at had a exit in the back of the industrial portion of the site, pretty much centrally located in that part of the building, and there's zero light back there. Uh, in an emergency egress, uh, into a dark area is not a safe situation, so there should be some type of lighting back there, whether it's controlled by perhaps the opening of the door, or on and off, uh, you know, uh, dusk or dawn, or something like that. Under drainage, uh, there was a reference to a detail that I didn't see, um, that was in response to number one. And, uh, number two, the proposed elevation of the base of the riprap berm overflow, I didn't see that. Those are really the few remaining things, uh, cleaning up my initial November review.
I don't, I don't see much there, per se, um, I see the issues to be addressed, um, but all doable.
I agree.
I don't know how the applicant feels about that, but, okay. So, uh, so now I guess what I'd like to do is bring it back to the board, and I know that at the last meeting, the planning board, their members had groups of questions, and, and maybe one way to handle it is, you know, we'll, we'll just go around, um, and the questions asked last time with the information that they provided in response to those questions, if you have further questions about that, to feel comfortable with those. And then any other questions you, you might have, uh, at that, at this point. So, with that being said, you wanna go, Matt?
Having not been here in the last one, uh, if you wanted to handle it that way.
Sure.
Start with Bob.
Okay, yep, thank you.
The question, uh, questions that I had were, uh, were dealt with to my satisfaction, if, if, uh, in terms of the nitrogen, um, infiltration, if Larry's good with their calculations, I'm good with their calculations, and regarding security, if Chief Cudmore is good, I'm good.
Sir.
Um, thank you for the MSDS and all the hazmat. Everything that I asked about the nitrogen, really happy to see that. Um, I did notice that you, you said that it wouldn't get overloaded if, unless you use more than a bypass rate of like thirty-eight percent. And, um, I would wonder why you wouldn't, at that point, see the efficiency of collecting it and reusing it in a closed-loop system if you were actually bypassing thirty-eight percent of it? If you were to go to that extreme?
We don't expect it to be bypassing more than five percent, I mean.
I didn't think you would.
Most of it's absorbed in plants.
Essentially, I think at that point, you'd, you'd, you'd be using it because you have to pay for water, because you have to pay for fertilizer. And so, I'm, my, my concerns are abated there. You have a quick question about the sodium perchlorate? Why? What for?
Uh, sodium perchlorate or? Sodium hyperchlorate. Hyperchlorate, yeah, bleach.
Sorry.
Sanitizing equipment, the trays have to be cleaned out, you want, you don't wanna have molds grow in there and bacteria that can get on the plants afterwards, you can sanitize, it's essentially a clean room we're growing in.
Okay.
Sanitize the whole room between batches.
All right, and that's, that would be in liquid form?
Yeah, diluted, it's like three percent of household, uh, concentration, it's really dilute, but it's enough to kill bacteria and mold.
But you wouldn't be having, this wouldn't be fifty-five gallon drums of this?
No.
Okay.
Might be five, more than five gallons.
Okay. In a storage container. What about the CO2?
The CO2 enhances the growth rate of the plants, so you can, uh, produce more green in a shorter amount of time. produce more green in a shorter amount of time.
You'd be spraying it on the front?
Oh, there's also another use for CO2, uh, we are looking at extraction equipment, and some companies will use things like butane to do extraction, but you can use liquid CO2 in a supercritical, uh, state, which is between liquid and gas, and it will act as a solvent, but it doesn't have any of the negative effects of using hydrocarbon. So, it's much healthier, leaves me much healthier, uh, way of handling it. Now, that is in a closed loop, so that does get refrained.
That's all I have for the, uh, the only thing, I don't have a question, is just, I don't know if we're gonna return, it's a general discussion. I just wanted to talk about conditions.
Yep, we'll come back.
Uh, we'll come back, come back to that.
Yeah. Hillary?
I had, uh, you mentioned about the lights. Is there any generator that's gonna be installed in case there was a, a problem with the lights?
I believe that's a requirement of the state regulations for backup power.
No, there isn't, so, uh, you wanna talk about the security stuff?
So, the security system, we're looking at getting a generator to run that and kind of, we also are looking at an option with battery, UPS battery backups. But the generator, of course, would run much longer, so that's, that's our current plan right now. We're not intending to have a backup system for the lights, but there are companies that can come to your facility with a truck that's a big generator. If, if you have a sense that the power's gonna be out for a day or, or several days, you can, you can, you can rent those.
I would like that to be a consideration for a condition. The other thing is, um, the times, did we ever go over that? What times of operation, the hours?
So, um, the, sort of the current, the, the ongoing theme here is you, uh, an operator can always expand their hours without aggravating their client base, but you retract them, and you can really frustrate that one patient who likes to come at, you know, 8:30 in the morning. So, I mean, of course, you know, we'd like to have some back and forth with the board or, you know, uh, anybody about this issue, but we'd like to have as much flexibility in hours as possible. If, you, you know, I mean, eight to eight is, is typical, and we certainly wouldn't be open longer than that, you know? So, if we had that option, we'd probably start out, you know, some days eight to four, other days, you know, 10 to six, you know, and then, and then, if we needed to expand them a little bit, we would, but certainly, we, we try to, you know, not retract them, and so that's kinda the idea.
So, we can put like, um, no earlier than eight o'clock AM and no later than 8:00 PM?
Yes, that would be fine, that's.
What about weekends?
I think weekends are pretty important, I mean, you're, you're talking about people buying, buying medicine when they go to work during the week, you know, so I think you need to have some flexibility on weekends as well. Unfortunately, it's just sort of the, the nature of the beast here.
Eight days, had you answered one of these?
Yeah, I, I think that'd be fine unless, Nat, or Paul, you have?
I believe in continuity, so every day open the same time.
So, there's no question to the public, I, I agree.
Okay.
Whatever it is, you settle on.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's thoughtful, yeah, thank you.
The liability, that's what I wanted to know about. What kind of liability insurance are you gonna plan on having?
So, uh, the state requirement, and I've, I've answered it actually, and now, for some reason, I think it's, it's one million, two million with, uh, I'm sorry, it just jumped out of my head.
Two million and one million each occurrence, I think.
Yeah, I apologize, it just jumped out of my head, it's, it's actually in the documents, but I can tell you in one second.
Can we get a copy of that?
The liability insurance?
Yeah.
Certificate of Insurance, of course, of course. So, I mean, make that a condition, you know, that we provide the town a condition of insurance, we would certainly provide that. I can tell you exactly what it is, if you give me a second, but by the time you're done with your questions, I'll hear this. RMD shall obtain and maintain general liability insurance coverage for no less than one million per occurrence and two million in aggregate annually, and product liability insurance, same, one million, two million in aggregate. And the policy deductible shall be, uh, no higher than $5,000 per occurrence. They do have, uh, a, a, a backup in here in case there's no insurance company or something that would provide insurance, there's plenty of insurance companies providing insurance for marijuana dispensaries across the country. Lloyd's pulled out, but there are a lot of underwriters doing it, it's actually a big market, I could probably get two emails a month from somebody who's trying to sell me insurance for my clients, so.
We already have, we already have insurance in place right now.
Okay, so we'll get the certificate.
We can have that copy before, before we make a final here. Okay, that's, thank you. Basically, I did just a draft of some of the conditions, I, oh, we mentioned the AVEC, the AVEC for the air and the moisture. Now, you're going to have showers in there, is that correct? So, you're gonna have the employees wash before they start working, after they leave, or before they leave, and?
I think it's, it's the option too, but I don't think there's a requirement.
Well, it's, it's a recommendation, I've seen that in some of the, uh, different, uh, states have. That it prevents the, like you said, mold, bacteria, whatever's on the employee's clothing. Or are you planning on putting overalls on everybody?
There are many coveralls, but, uh, there's also some, you know, sometimes just handling the stuff has a certain scent to it, people want to go take a shower when they're done, looking to, so.
So, you're gonna, yeah, are you, are you going to install these showers and it's gonna be connected to the, to the floor drain, is that the idea?
Yeah, to the normal septic system, yeah.
Right, to the set. So, that'll be more water than if you have fifty employees, you're gonna have more water coming into the system.
So, the, the water was part of the calculation, it's not part of the nitrogen calculations because there's no nitrogen added through the showers.
No.
There's, there's a base number that comes for, uh, standard sewage coming out of the hood. And that has a base nitrogen that's added to the calculation, and that assumes, you know, showering, uh, toilets.
Well, basically, if I may, cheating, that your use will not create a nuisance caused by noise, fumes, and glare of lights. The second one I have is that the proposed use shall not cause drainage or water flow leaving the site to prevent changes in groundwater levels, increased runoff, and potential for flooding in the adjoining lands and roads. And the third one I had was the wastewater discharge of sewer disposal shall not contaminate the railway water supply. And, and the, the last one I had is the liability. So, that's my start so far.
What's that?
Thank you.
I had a few comments. I had a few comments on the plans.
Excuse me for putting them down on the floor.
Oh.
Minor comment on C3, um, on your, uh, rain garden detail, two-inch hardwood mulch. Um, hardwood floats away, and I'd recommend considering using a decorative stone instead.
And, um, Mr. Hoover?
Yeah.
Uh, we do have, our landscape architect is here also, he, he dutifully shows up every, every hearing, although he doesn't, he doesn't really.
Can you ask a question, please?
If we asked him something, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice to.
Do you have any issues with changing that out to a decorative stone?
No, I don't, there's no issues, the DEP's management manual actually recommends hardwood.
I know they do.
Yeah, so we put it in there as a standard.
Yep.
I think they're actually leaning there to do no mulch, if it's standard, so we could even do decorative stone. But some, sometimes a decorative stone can actually inhibit some of the odious materials, grasses and sedges from, from growing. Sometimes I prefer actually no mulch to the stone, so.
Does the DEP, are they, is the, is the no mulch in place now?
Is leaning towards no mulch instead of the hardwood mulch.
So, um,
I'm sorry.
Okay, but it's not, it's not, it's not policy yet, just as good as anything.
Because you can look it up.
I think it's such a minor detail, um, to be honest with you, you know, I, I don't have strong feelings about it. Consider all three, what you end up putting on the plan is what we'll go with.
Okay, thank you.
The, um, on the lighting plan, so, I think it was in the, uh, November 5th submittal that you folks gave, there was a comment there that you would comply with the ordinance, which I think everybody's been thinking. So, you have a lot of light trespass going on, so you need to take care of that. And with regards to all of your existing spotlights, that issue of looking into the fixture, you need to address that, that's not acceptable. And then, with regards to any lighting that you may be adding, I'm not sure how you wanna deal with, with, uh, with combining the new LED fixtures with what you've got on site, that's something you're gonna need to figure out. Unfortunately, where, where, where those brand-new, state-of-the-art fixtures are today, they're primarily concerned with energy, and so, they're not really yet. They call them nighttime-friendly, but they're not. You can see them really easily, and they actually.
The temperatures.
Well, the temperature's at 5,000 usually, but, uh, they're, they're literally one, I think the statistic is they're 1/16th the brightness of the sun, and if you look at them, if, if you look at them, you will damage your eyes. And that's where the industry is state-of-the-art, so, you know, you, you, you downtone the, the heat down to 3K versus 5K or 4K. And unfortunately, you need more poles so that the fixtures are down lower, because there really aren't cutoffs, and when you put them up, go take a look at the new Pembroke School. State-of-the-art fixtures. It looks like you're in Fenway Park.
You said in Pembroke?
Pembroke School. These are state-of-the-art fixtures, and they are, but the industry hasn't caught up yet with the design part, they're, they're right now just focused totally on energy conservation, so.
Okay.
But, so, we do have a lighting ordinance, and the ordinance talks about 20-foot maximum, 20-foot pole heights, and please consider lower pole heights, because if you do go with those new fixtures, um, you're gonna run into that issue, so basically, it's bringing the photometrics plan, a new plan, that shows how you would address all of that. That was my biggest, um, biggest question. Do you have any issues with our technical review agent's comments?
The site access will submit to MassDOT. Uh, we'll also ask the question about the signs at that time. I'll let the ownership talk about the, the pavement, but, uh, 52 versus 54, that was, that's an easy enough one. The areas, the difference in area is actually that lofted second story, um, of 2,900 square feet, and I'll provide the information on that. When we revise the lighting plan, uh, for the chair's comments, we'll also address the, um, the items, and, uh, the elevation of the base of the riprap, we can add to the detail as well as make sure it's called out where it was specified in the letter, and I don't think there'll be too much of an issue addressing, uh, Mr. Graham's.
So, the only one item in there that I heard that was a question mark was the pavement?
And, um, I'll, I'll commit to, uh, sealing the cracks and seal coating the pavement and put new, new, new traffic lines on it.
Does that, does that work for you?
It's, that's kind of a patch.
I know it is, but it's, 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 it's a, a big parking lot, and I think for the, for the next two years, see if the operation wants to create enough, um, money to then repave, I think it's reasonable.
So, maybe that's a condition.
Actually, we could cover it as a condition of a, of a revisited, you know?
No, we've done that once, and it didn't work, remember? Do you recall?
We feel to have shear. On things such as that.
As far as, as far as, um, as far as Mr. Conley's, um, comments, I think, and I'm speaking as much to the board right now, my attitude about the comments is that, uh, you know, they do come back to the board for our decision, for our discussion, but I, um, I don't see, I'm only speaking for myself, I, I don't see anything in here that hasn't been addressed, um, adequately, but I certainly wouldn't have any problem if the board so felt to have, um, Mr. Eichman take a look at these also, to see if he saw any reasons why the town would want to include some of these. But I, I didn't wanna not address those comments, and so, I, I'm just putting that on the table.
Well, I think, excuse me, I, one of the, one of the ones that, I, it hit me right off, and I, when I started to do a draft here, we oughta have the name, and it's Nathaniel Avery, is that correct?
Yep.
So, you are the principal of Healthy Farms?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be in, in the decision. That's a good idea, and I appreciate that, Mr. Conley. I like a person on there, I don't like a company.
So, I don't wanna get into each one right now, but, Matt, what were you gonna say?
I just wanted to, the pedestrian, the, the, the no pedestrians, um, I, I presume that you don't have an issue with that, right?
Well, you know, I mean, if you look at the site, it's not particularly conducive to somebody walking up to. That being said, I mean, we're dealing with medical use of marijuana patients, I don't really know if it's, uh, somebody, we're, we're supposed to like monitor the, the way they access the site and turn them away, you know? If somebody had dropped them off nearby, certainly, we don't expect a lot of foot traffic there, that's not why they acquired that property, but I don't think it would be appropriate for Healthy Farms to turn away somebody who can't drive, and that, they finally got there, you know, and they're coming to pick up to get medicine, I, it just seems odd to me, certainly, we could probably, you know, talk to customers and say, you know, the preference, look at the place, our preference is that you get a ride here and don't drive, and don't walk, but I don't.
Are you planning to do delivery?
Of course.
So, that would be a way of eliminating pedestrians?
Well, that would be a way if the pedestrian knew or had the forethought or foresight to ask for us to deliver, certainly, I, and I, and I really think it would be, I mean, I can't imagine how people are gonna walk up to that site, I, you know?
I guess, I guess where I'm going with this, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're gonna resolve each one of those items tonight, and I.
That, there was, that one, I was just, I couldn't figure out what, uh, what the thought process was, at least from their side.
Well, we didn't, we didn't write it.
I understand.
Yeah.
All the rest of them, I can kind of imagine what your response would be, that was the one I didn't, didn't know.
So, I, I guess what I'd, I guess what I'd like to ask, and, and before we bring it to the board for a general discussion about, you know, conditions and what you would.
Process, more than conditions, process.
Yeah, yeah, and, and to Mr. Eichman, um, so, if we closed the public hearing, if the board felt comfortable with closing the public hearing, and they may not, I mean, it's a question, if they close the public hearing, we then have how many days before we have to have the written approval with conditions signed?
So, you have in front of you now, uh, two-pronged application, you've got a site plan application, a special permit application, those have different time periods for approval, the site plan is governed by the local bylaws. And as I read that this evening, that's a 60-day period to, to decision from the date the application is filed. So, one thing I've asked for is to determine what the date the application was filed, I know the original one was withdrawn, so we have a refiling, and I don't know, we've got a date yet.
Do you have that date in?
Well, we, I interrupt, yeah, we actually filed a waiver of that date through March or something, it's attached to.
I'm seeing that, but I wanna address this, and then we'll get to the waiver, because we got a couple of things to think about here.
Do, do you have that date?
No, no, when, when we withdrew and refiled the application.
Twenty first, does that sound?
First to the second of December.
Was it refiled by letter, or do you have anything that would indicate when that was?
We did, you know, actually, if you, if we recall, I, I handwrote, I handwrote a, a written request to withdraw uh, right, right then, because I, I wasn't on top of that, that piece of the process, unfortunately, but we did do that, and we, we handwrote a request, and the board voted on it.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Right, so this is the request to withdraw, then, when did that come back before the board?
Same night.
Same day.
Same night.
Same night.
Well, that's.
But we had pre, we had noticed it, though, as if it was going to happen, I just hadn't made the written request to withdraw it, but we had noticed it, we, we sent out the, and we got the green slips back, and we did the, the receipt and all that. So, we noticed a new hearing, I just hadn't done the process with the board on withdrawing it and doing the new hearing, uh, and so we did it, uh, you know, in the, in the public session that night.
So, that date is December 10th, according to. Right, so that date is December 10th, according to the stamp here.
And I believe they were delivered to the board on December 2nd.
Yeah.
I'm gonna see if I can find the email.
And that may be, I mean, I don't, I don't know if this is gonna pose an issue, obviously, I mean, ordinarily be the date that the application was submitted in accordance with the regulations and the bylaws, but it doesn't sound like, given even application on the floor, that you could actually consider that application to be submitted, they withdraw the other one, so I think probably we're looking at this as the date.
I think that's...
Of submission. So, December 10th, so you've got 60 days to reach a decision on its site plan. Now, that's, now we get to your point, you have filed an extension. I believe that's, I should take a look at that.
Funny, I was, I was reading the KMP, KMP guidance on this the other day.
You were?
I was.
What did we say?
It was up me.
Okay, so we've got, request for extension was made on, looks like January 13th.
Did that fall to the quarter, John?
March 31st.
March 31st is what's circled on here.
What we should always extend to, always to quarters.
So, given that, let's just pull the, the bylaws up, so we're still talking just about the site plan, I think that's the one we need to talk about first, because the special permit is much more, it's much more latitude with the special permit, we haven't even closed the hearing yet on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I thought John was touching my...
No, go ahead, I'm just, I'm looking for the, your site plan bylaw to make sure I have the, the timing right on this, but go ahead while I'm...
Just to spark this discussion, and I know we'll look at the details. In my mind, I have always felt more comfortable, especially now where we don't have a planner, keeping the hearing open, being that far from closing it, only for the purpose of being able to take information in by means of a draft decision that the board can discuss at public hearing. And for that reason, leaving it open, and then, once we've determined that the draft decision...
We agree.
Has all, yeah, has all its Ts crossed and its Is dotted, at that point, close the hearing that night, and issue a decision.
With, with regards to that, Andrea, what is, what is our next agenda looking like? Oh, we do have them on the next one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Snyder was being, was having some forethought there.
Just for him?
Yeah.
All right.
So, you know, getting back to the site plan, we've got, you do have 60 days, but clearly you've got an extension till March 31st on that, so that's your deadline.
Okay.
To take a vote, reach a final decision on the site plan.
Okay.
These applications have been presented to the board as one, so obviously, the way you want to do it, if you can, is to vote on both at the same time, and I don't think there's any reason why you wouldn't do that. The special permit, you have 90 days from the date you close public hearing to reach, take final action, file a decision with the town clerk, you've obviously got plenty of time to do that, certainly, by March, if you were making a decision, you're well within the time.
Okay, and to your, to your point, I, I concur with what you just said, I do, with that regard. No?
Process. Usually, we have a town planner that, we all pipe up all our conditions, and somehow he magically puts them all together, and they all end up in the, in the decision, but we don't have the benefit of that right now. How, how do we incorporate Matt's conditions, Bob's conditions, yours, how do we?
Well, so, I, I think that I will be willing to take notes of what the conditions would be, and together with Andrea, we will, we will draft them up, and we also will have Howard take a look at those, and he is willing to be part of that process still, and I'm very thankful for that. So, that would be how I'm thinking that would happen.
We already have a draft, and I would assume this was from Howard, a lot of it was filled out.
It was.
Great number, a number of things.
It was.
In here, don't apply.
You're talking about the draft dated?
I don't see a date.
Yeah, just a draft.
Right, and...
There's some things that don't apply.
Yeah, there's some things, there are things that don't apply, there are certain things that, well, I mean, obviously, we have to add conditions, other than the ones, planning board to add conditions.
There's a lot of things that don't apply, because it's basically our bylaw.
Right, it's, it's a...
And I would like to see any of the recommendations that we've talked about be right on the plan, and you just put on your decision as per plan. Dated such and such.
So, how, so how would the board like to proceed then with identifying these conditions to, to then share as one with the applicant? Because we're not gonna have time tonight to...
No, no, we've taken some time.
Please.
What Tillie says has some merit, I have done that before, where the additional sheet has been put on with all the conditions listed, and then approved to the plan. That helps the board, I don't mind aggregating the comments, putting them on the plan, sending them back for review and...
There will be another set that we'll need, which would be an updated with a date, and the lighting plan would be part of that, and the landscape plan, please be a part of that also at this time, even if...
Then we'll revise the date, where we're already scheduled to have to review this next meeting, so we all bring our proposed conditions to that meeting and grab them around at that point.
I think so.
Could we potentially send them to Andrea?
Have her compile them?
Have her just list them all out, and we just kill what we want to kill.
So, what you need...
Can you get a look at them?
So, what you need...
If you want me to.
So, what you need to do is, so what we need to do is, we need to get those then to Andrea, so that she can get them back to us in our packet.
We can send them to...
To Charlie?
I would, yeah, when we get them all compiled and everything.
You make them work?
We can do that at the next meeting.
And then we kill the ones we don't like.
I think what I'd do is, I would, you know, make comments about, you know, legality and things like that, and let you work out the details, and then when you have something that's, you know, at my comments, you have another public meeting, you finalize, and look at those.
So, so can we, can the board, can we make Andrea meant to get those?
What's our timeline?
Well, we have another hearing coming up then with Healthy Farms on the 9th, so I would say we need to get those to her by the beginning of next week.
What's the next meeting? Yeah?
The 9th.
The 9th?
So, I, I for one won't be in town Friday through Monday, but I will commit to getting those Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday. If you folks could get them to her a little later than, well, they're all gonna be word-perfect documents, and she could just cut and paste it, so that won't take long. Okay, is that what the board wants to do?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion, if it's appropriate, to continue the hearing to March 9th at 7:15.
Second.
Motion's been made, and it has been seconded to continue the public hearing for Healthy Farms to March 9th, 2016. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One second, one second, one second. We can discuss the special permit and building permit.
Yeah, the special permit part's closed, we have, that administrative thing I actually brought up earlier, he has this construction crew sitting around, and we'd like to start doing things like, you know, replacing lights and maybe poles and dealing with the...
Securing the building.
Concrete, securing the building.
Keep the contractor there versus losing them.
Yeah, exactly, and it's a contract, yeah, we're doing it at our own peril if we do it, essentially.
So, what are you asking us about?
Well, I just don't want, I don't want to step on your toes by doing it as well.
The building permit needs, needs a signature from the plan.
It's gonna depend on what they're asking to do.
So, can you be a little more specific what you're asking to do?
So, securing the building.
What's that mean?
Fill in all the loading docks to match the exterior of the building.
The garage doors.
The garage doors, separating this area from the construction areas or this building attendant area with firewalls.
How about this, in writing is much better, can you get us a list tomorrow in writing?
Yes.
And we will just make sure that it is okay, and then perhaps we can...
Let's go to the building inspector, I think is who you want to have a look at this.
Have the building inspector look at it.
Because the idea is, of course, that, you know, before you get building permits for a use that requires site plan approval, you get site plan approval, so you're gonna have to convince him that these are things you would do that you don't need site plan approval for, so that's...
Okay, so maybe we won't do the exterior stuff, but just interior.
Did Paul Bacon approve it? Did you ask Paul?
It would have to be Paul to files for the building permit.
Okay, well, we'll get the list, should we get to Mr. Lee Ball?
Actually, if, I mean, to, to Mr. Eichmann's comment, perhaps you should copy the, us, the planning board, Andrea, but send it directly to our building inspector.
Okay.
And CC us and ask for a timely response at the planning board's request.
Okay.
Great, great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, five-minute break. Hallelujah.
Truly a joke. Not a serious kind of...
And if it was, it'd be all right with me.
Well, we have a ballot initiative in November, and they make all this kind of a different issue, so I don't want to steal...
What is that ballot initiative?
What's that?
What is the ballot initiative?
Relays marijuana, got shoes.
...
We are back on. Like to reopen the planning board meeting February 24th, and we're gonna go to our second public hearing, which is the zoning bylaw amendment, Chapter 57, stormwater and erosion control.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing for Chapter 57 Stormwater and Erosion Control Bylaw, the zoning bylaw amendment, continue from January 27th.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to open the continued public hearing of Chapter 57 Stormwater and Erosion Control Amendment to the bylaw. No discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are open. In this case, I think what I'm gonna first do is go to the public, and then we'll bring it right back to the planning board. And the overview from where I sit, I guess, is thinking that, you know, we have the draft that's been modified in our hands. And the idea that's outstanding, as far as I'm aware, short of the amendments to this document, is who is, whose jurisdiction is responsible for, you know, responsibility for enforcement, Conservation Commission versus Planning Board. And I just remind the board that that is something that we can address later through regulations after town meeting. This is about simply getting this on the warrant, and that's.
You know, I think it says in there that which group is testing the authority.
Okay, well, okay, if it doesn't, okay, then, thank you, we'll point it out, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a general question about it? Is this ready for town meeting? Does the board feel as though that we are actually ready to move forward with this?
I, I thought so.
Yeah, let's move it. We've been, we've been.
There's enough here that's good.
Is, is, is this really in line with the communication that we got from Steve Piszynski, from the agent from the Concom?
Well, let's, let's talk about that. Let's go to the public first.
I'm looking, and I'm trying to find it.
Okay, so let's go to the public first, and if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, George.
George Kamisky, 45 Old Jenkins Road, also the Park River Clean Water Association. So I did look at the changes Howard had made, and, you know, agree those are appropriate. I think there might have been a typo in one of the changes. But, you know, looking at the bylaw as a whole, the bylaw is required by EPA, it's probably MS4 permit. And right now, the bylaw doesn't do anything because there's no regulations, there's no procedures, there's never been a Chapter 57 filing. And not only that, but it exempts major development from the bylaw, which is ridiculous. So I went to, did some research, among other towns, and most towns adopted the stormwater bylaw as part of the MS4 Phase 1 agreement that went from 2003 to 2008. So they adopted, you know, regulations almost immediately. So we're like the only town that, that doesn't have that. And considering that, the EPA might consider that, that we're in non-compliance, you know? You know, so we, you know, we need to get moving, and so I had gone to the Concom like four or five years ago, and they kind of got logged down with other things. And, you know, I'm happy to see that the planning board is, is taking action, you know, on this bylaw. And I, the other issue besides regulations is that, you know, we're still using the outdated precipitation, rainfall precipitation events, you know, known as TP-40, you know, which are based on 1960 rainfall data. And I found, doing some research, I found that other towns like Newbury, Newburyport, Foxford have all adopted the Cornell, they call them Northeast Regional Climate Center numbers. Ipswich has them in their wetland regulations, but not in the, the stormwater regulations. So I, I know some people in Ipswich I contacted, and they, they should be looking at making a change too. But I think, from my perspective, I'd like to see all the, all the towns adopt these numbers, given the high, the, the status of the watershed being highly stressed, you know, the river runs, frequently runs dry, you know, we need to increase our infiltration amounts and properly design stormwater systems that meets the basin's need. So I hope this is the first step, you know, I, you know, we have to look at some, you know, regulations. I think we should, we, I don't think they should be redundant. I think we can put them in the wetland regs, I think we can put them in our subdivision regs, I think we can put them in the special permits, I mean, but, you know, I'm talking about the stormwater calculations, but I'm glad we're finally starting to take this step. Should improve the watershed, because we are suffering from lack of flow, water quality issues. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I ask George a question?
Sure.
George, have you had a chance to see this revised bylaw?
Yeah, I saw some edits that Howard had made, I didn't really see any, there was a typo in one of them, I thought. But I think that's, when you draft language for town meeting, I think they can be, you know, corrected.
Wait, wait. Would you recommend that this be adopted, that the board adopts this?
Sure.
And recommend it to town meeting?
Sure, I mean, I know the Concom is, you know, still has some issues, they, they talked about dividing the bylaw into two and maybe taking, making an erosion control bylaw and a stormwater bylaw. I think it's just wording. I mean, I think that.
What I'd like to do is, is your concern, the permitting granting authority issue, who it is and who's enforcing, is that your concern?
My biggest concern right now is no vote was taken, according to an email from Steve Piszynski. When this was presented and discussed at the last conservation meeting, no vote was taken, as the commission wanted more time to approve the bylaw. I, I'm just a little concerned that this board would be bringing requested changes, recommended changes to the town meeting, and by the time the process actually occurred, the Conservation Commission representatives and members would be standing up at the town meeting, recommending that town voters voted down.
Okay, so, so.
And I think that's just a disconnected, the town meeting members don't deserve that.
I, I don't think it is as disconnected as you might be implying. So let's, we'll get back to the board to talk about this then. What I'd like to do is finish with the, with the public, okay? And then we'll bring it back to that discussion.
The, the type, the, the typo that you're talking about, do you recall where it was, just so we can address that now?
I, I think you'll see it.
Was it a word or was it a phrasing?
It's phrasing.
Okay, thank you, I think I found it.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that wanted to add anything with regards to this?
Listen.
Okay, so then, bringing it back to the board. So my, my understanding with regards to Conservation Commission, oh, before I go there, I had a conversation with Larry about this, and I think he has an interesting example, which seems to make a lot of sense for the jur, the enforcement, who's responsible for what, and perhaps you could share that with us.
Yeah, I do a lot of work in Ipswich, I live in Ipswich, and the, the way that Ipswich has the jurisdictional authority set up is that if the project comes before the planning board for a site plan review, special permit, definitive subdivision, then they are the jurisdictional authority. If it comes before only the Conservation Commission, in other words, a notice of intent for, you know, let's say, a, a small development of some type, then they become the jurisdictional authority. And if it does not have review by those two boards, then the DPW is the jurisdictional authority. So that's the way they have their bylaw set up. And it seems to work pretty well.
It seems to, when I, when you said that, it just seemed like a light bulb went off, it was like it makes everybody happy.
I don't think it work, it wouldn't work here with the DPW, because I know Newburyport and Ipswich have the DPW issue of permits, but a town, a city like it, Newburyport has a engineer on staff who can review the calculations that are.
Understand.
Presented to them. I, I mean, I think only through the hearing process it'll work.
Well, so, so what if, what if that part, if there's no, if it doesn't come before either of those two boards, then, then it falls by default to the planning board? And then you would have Conservation Commission responsible for jurisdiction for those projects that come only before Conservation Commission, otherwise it goes to the planning board.
Well, yeah, the trouble that I see, and explain further there, Larry, is the Conservation would only get it if it was in anything for their jurisdiction on wetlands.
Correct.
So if this drainage was not in that area, they still, they would look at it? And it's not a subdivision, it's not a special permit, what if it's just an A and R?
Well, an A and R might come before them, the way that Ipswich has it set up is, is based on 50% of a lot being altered, or 10,000 square feet. So they have those, you know, those, yeah, trips, so.
And some have single family houses, exempted.
Right, but it, but if it, you know, it's not all about the Conservation Commission anyway, it's about drainage. So if the, if the drainage for a major subdivision, which it's highly unlikely that the Conservation Commission wouldn't have a little piece of that anyway, but should it? And it's all up, you know, above and highland or upland and above their jurisdiction, the planning board can go out to a consultant, and, and they've got that set up, where they can have a consultant review all those drainage calculations, all the drainage plans, and I think that would work, work well for the jurisdiction.
And that you can have that language in the regulations, you know?
Exactly.
So you don't have to fuss with this now.
And, and that's, I guess that's where I was going with this, that, that whole issue we can deal with in the regulations, and, and I think the goal of this is that, my take on, on your comment about disconnect, my, my take is that the Conservation Commission, and I think Steve says it here, you know, that it's not a disconnect, it has more to do with this issue of, of jurisdiction. And, and if we can deal with that later, and everyone's done so much work to get this on the warrant, to, to go ahead and approve this with amendments, to get it on the warrant, and then deal with that particular issue later, when we can deal with it later.
The other thing, I was, I attended the stormwater committee meeting when the, it was decided, when the stormwater bylaw was, talks about being implemented. It wasn't like, you know, Nick Crapnell turned to Steve, he goes, "Do you want it," or, or, "Should I take it?" Steve go, "Well, I guess I'll take it." But, so it wasn't this big territorial fight, you know, back then, about who should have jurisdiction. I don't think we're, you know, building kingdoms here, it's just.
Well, uniquely enough, with the responsibility of the jurisdiction comes the, the mandate, the requirement that we have to promulgate regulations under it, if I read it correctly. And that was never done. And that would be something that would fall to this board after that, if this were.
I think, there's, like, Ipswich, we could just tag out Ipswich name, put in George now.
They don't have the Cornell numbers.
I, oh, they don't, they, the Conservation Commission does.
Yeah, so, but there's, there's no wetland, there's no wat, water resources that, then you don't use TP-40, I guess, you know, so you, that's why I say you can't, I don't think it'd be over redundant, you can put it in your subdivision regulations, you can put it in special, well, special permits refer to subdivision regulations. But, and, and the Concom can have it in the wetland regulations, so I think you cover the basis, so the applicant knows what, what number is he supposed to use, you know?
And, and so again, I mean, if, if we can deal with this later, and Steve's comment, Steve Piszynski is the agent for the Conservation Commission, his comment, "The only aspect of this discussion that was noteworthy was the Concom was wondering if the erosion and stormwater aspects could be regulated by different groups," which is the issue we're talking about. So I, I think, I think there's general consensus for, for what we've all put together, and.
So it sounds like we need a rewrite from, from the draft that I read.
When did you get that draft? I've seen so many, I don't remember, what's the date?
It was in the packet.
It was in, this is what was in the packet.
Oh, this, tonight's package?
Yeah. I don't think there's a date on it.
Yeah.
To the email? Okay.
When do we need to, in terms of schedules, when do, I was hoping we were gonna be able to scratch those two sections and send this along as is, but what, what part would be rewritten, are you suggesting?
Well, if, if, if the intent is to split the jurisdiction as it was described, I think we need some additional work.
I think you can put it in the regulations. I think you can put that in the regulations.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting, we just, we just put it in the regulations and be done with this and move on.
You put that in the regulations, but.
And I've seen, I've, I looked at some regulations that said, if the applicant files all these requirements, like sets of plans and all that, the jur, the body that has jurisdiction can say, we're gonna waive, we can, if you're in front of us for a definitive subdivision or special permit, we'll waive the Chapter 57 requirements, or their stormwater regulations, so you don't have to pay an extra set of fees, you just, you just, you're in front of us. And so different communities have worded it differently, so they can, so there's crossover, you know, so, and that, they're not, that applicant is not paying double fees for, so that could be all worked out, and, you know, that way.
I think the fact is, let's, let's be realistic, you know? We've had this bylaw for eons, and I mean, what's the date of the original, I can't tell you.
Probably six years old or something like that, six, seven years.
And we have no regulations all that time, and I think.
We had no authority, only the permit granting authority.
Well, that's my point. Now, if we are the permitting authority for that section, we can do the regulations, and that's what it amounts to.
And I understand that, I'm just wondering if the permit granting authority can, through its regulations, hand off its authority to another board, through regulation, when the bylaw says that the permit granting authority is the planning board? And I, I, maybe I'm just.
Hand it off, why would you wanna do that?
Well, the way, in, in order, I would suggest the permit granting authority is, is written as the way Ipswich, and the way Larry presented it, but in case of DPW, it's, it's just there are two groups it goes to. It goes, you know, special permits, site plan, whatever else, it's planning board, and if it's a Conservation Commission only issue, then it's Conservation Commission.
I'd be interested to see the writing, the wording.
I mean, it's also reviewed by DEP, DEP reviews.
Do we, do we have time to, do we have time to postpone this? Can we do that? Can we postpone this another couple of weeks, or is there any schedule issues with?
I understand you're saving its space, is that?
We do have a place.
I think that word, Howard, you.
We already have a placeholder, right?
As long as you got a place on the warrant, yeah, you don't have to include this until town meeting, essentially, when you have to give a report.
All right, so let's do that then, let's, let's, I mean, I, I think unless, I, I think what I'm hearing is that, let's re, let's rewrite the permit granting authority piece, and the, and that would be, that would be it. And Larry.
And the typo that Matty found.
Larry, would you be so kind as to send off just an email with that wording, the way Ipswich has it, and get rid of it?
Yeah, I'll get a copy of the regs and send it to you.
And just send that to us, okay, thank you. Close to that. You guys all set with that?
Yep.
All right.
And the typo, that's about it, right?
And the typo, where was the typo?
Section 6, 57, 6C.
Section 6, Andrea, are you hearing that?
Yeah, 57, 6.
C.
Do you want me to read it?
Please.
The PGA may adopt, comma, "in consultation with the Conservation Committee," comma, and then the rest as is.
Excuse me, but that should be Conservation Commission, there is no Conservation Committee.
Commission, okay. All right, thanks, thanks, George. So that we will.
Continue then?
Continue this public hearing, I'm gonna say.
23rd?
I'd say from a month from now. I'd say for a month from now.
Bump it out two weeks to look at it.
Well.
It's a quick look, and we can always just bump it again, right?
Yeah, but there's, there's a lot com- there's a lot coming up in the next two weeks, and I'd like to go a month, just until we get the plan in place. So, can we continue the hearing too? What would be the next meeting after the nine?
It would be the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
This is a bylaw, do we have to get this into, do we have to close the hearing a certain amount of time before town meeting?
It sounds like you're thinking of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, it's only zoning.
It's got a general, so I think your advisory at this point is.
Cause we're just advising the plan, the selectmen to put it forward.
Great. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the chapter fifty-seven stormwater erosion control to March twenty-third, twenty sixteen at, well, whenever the next available time is.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to continue the zoning bylaw amendment, chapter fifty-seven stormwater erosion control discussion to the February, to the March twenty-third agenda. Any discussion, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous. We have one more public hearing, we then have old business of turning leaf coming up, which is gonna take a little bit of time, and so I'm just giving you guys heads up on that. So with that, I'd like to get a motion to open the public hearing number three, please.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that you postpone that? Since I have to recuse myself for it.
Sure.
Or I'll just leave and somebody texts me.
I think.
I'll be in my car, I might come back.
Would you, would you mind doing it that way, Harry?
Not at all.
Let's do that, all right, thanks.
Why don't you just take all my stuff just in case?
Why don't you leave your stuff just in case, like your glasses?
So, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I ask that the record show that Mr. Locatelli recuses himself. Did he make a motion? And, and recuses himself and, and leaves the room. Somebody text me.
I'll text you, but.
Text me when you're done, guys, pulling all the.
Okay. So, let's see, so this, this evening, for definitive subdivision plan Palmer Lane, we have in, that we received today from Mr. Graham's office, the technical review, the first technical review in full of these plans, I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention, we're not gonna get into it tonight.
I don't think we voted to open the public.
We didn't open it yet.
I think, I think we did.
I don't think he made a motion.
Obviously the only one that.
Harry, Harry said he was gonna, you said he was.
Oh, I voted on nothing then, okay.
It's getting late.
I was in favor of it.
So, was a motion made?
No.
Have we opened the public hearing for number two, Tenny Street?
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the public hearing for two Tenny Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So anyways, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and we'll, we'll go to the applicant for a, a quick presentation if they like. We're not gonna get into anything tonight. This is just more administrative than anything else.
I know it's getting late, and I know that there are some, maybe a little redundancies in my presentation because I know we've been here before, but I'll go through some of the things. But I would like to make my presentation about the definitive plan, and I kinda would like to go through Mr. Graham's comments briefly.
No, we're not gonna do that, not tonight.
Well, I didn't wanna go through them because a lot of them are just drafting issues, but there are some issues that Mr. Graham brings up for the board to discuss, and so I wouldn't know.
Not tonight.
You don't wanna do that tonight?
We just received, we just received Larry's report tonight, we haven't even read it.
Okay, all right, I didn't, no, but I was prepared to address that so I could get some response back.
Sure.
That's all right. And also there are waivers, so I didn't know if that's something we could talk about, no?
Not tonight.
Okay, okay, so then I'll just do a brief presentation. So this is the property, it's tax map ten, lot fifteen, some of you recognize it. It's very similar to the plan we brought in for preliminary and got a preliminary approval. So, basically start out with the title sheet, definitive plan shows the property, two Tenny Street, and its location, zoning is residential B, R B. Does have a list of the waivers, notes, and typical things for a title page, so I won't go into too much detail because it is late. So I'll just keep flipping over the pages and go through that. Second sheet is existing conditions plan, basically shows all the features on the site, topography, limits of the property, butters, and the location on Tenny Street and East Main, right at the corner there, and the title block and whatnot. So that's what that shows, and shows the contours in that sense. The third page is definitive subdivision plan, again, that shows the things necessary, the scale, graph scale, and, and what arrow and. But it also shows the perimeter and the proposed lots, cause this is kinda what we thought we would go with for a subdivision, and developing a lane with a Y arrangement, which is similar to what we had presented before. And we just made a little bit of a bend in the road a little bit, and adjusted the lot calculations. It shows the existing house that's here, and it shows proposed buildings with proposed setback lines according to the zoning. At our, at the preliminary meeting, it was recommended by, you butter to the northwest of a buffer zone, an extensive buffer zone. And so what we're recommending is, instead of just having a thirty-foot limit of building, which someone could then clear right up to the property line, we're, we're recommending here as an easement here, as a no, no cut easement of thirty feet, and then a sixty-foot no build. And so that would give some sort of a buffer from your butters to the northwest. So that's included on that sheet. So the next sheet would be grading plan, and that shows the existing conditions, also the proposed conditions. It shows the, the location of the buildings, the grading associated with that. The, basically the watershed line is basically in the top part here, flows to the north to a wetland that's off-site. There are no wetlands on-site, and most of the drainage from the whole site all drains down to a natural detention area in the front here. There's a ridge right in, along this area here where the drainage runs to the other side. So those are the basic drainage watersheds that we analyzed in our dr- stormwater analysis. And so we show the hatched areas as septic system areas, where we did test pits throughout the site, and they were witnessed by Deb Rogers from the Health Department. So we're proposing a drainage scheme, picking up the stormwater from the site, basically from the street and drainage, and draining down into a treatment swale that comes down through in a, in a drainage retention area here. The natural area that's here is just being expanded and to compensate for the extra runoff from there. So forty-foot wide right-of-way, and each of the driveways have leaching trenches on the downslope of the driveways, and the, the buildings have roof drainage for groundwater infiltration on those two. So that's basically summarizes sheet four. One thing I wanted to bring up, we did put, we did, we do have erosion control on the downslope side of all the areas of where the possibility of any sediment runoff was on that. But also in presenting the comments from one of the butters from our preliminary, there was mentioned that at one time there was, a previous owner had a pet burial area for their pets. And so I walked the site afterwards, and I, and we were fortunate enough not to have a lot of snow, so I was able to go out there when there wasn't any snow. The only area that I saw that was any indication of, what I could think of that might be an indication of a pet burial, there was some rocks right up here in this area on the slope that looked like they weren't, they were different from, they looked like they were placed there, and could have been something, I don't know. So we've kinda left this area in the front of this house lot as an area prox- proximate, existing pet burial area. So our hatched area around here shows us an area of limit of clearing, and so I just wanted to make note of that, that we aren't disturbing that area. So I guess the next sheet, going quickly over to the next sheet, which is the utility plan. And this sheet shows the stormwater collection area for the drainage. Shows our listing, pipes for catch basins, also catch basins and detention, and their drainage from the catch basins to the manholes into a treatment area, treatment swale. And also it shows underground electric serving the area, and also a water service to each lot there. And in speaking to, by email through the Water Department Agent Lou at the Water Department, basically said he has some changes for me on that too, and he, he contacted me and Howard on, by email, and he was gonna get those changes to me. I haven't got them yet, but they did talk about some changes for the water supply and, and the hydrant, I believe, for, for this property as well. So again, that's basically just identifies the utilities for, for the project. The next sheet is, again, the site, also in conjunction with that, the centerline profile. And with that, we have some waivers, in our list of waivers, from the requirements for the road profile and the, and the grading for that. It's basically a two percent slope for, for seventy-five feet, and then there's another seventy-five foot transition to a grade of just over seven, seven, three-quarter percent, for another seventy-five feet, regular grade, and then another vertical curve, seventy-five, vertical, vertical curve to a two percent grade up just beyond three hundred for the turnaround area, so the turnaround area would be fairly flat for any emergency vehicles to get turned around. So that's what we kinda propose as, as, as the roadway. If we had to comply with the regulations, there would be significantly a lot more cut, cutting and removal of material on the site and, and disturbing a lot more trees and whatnot there in order to make the grades work. So we thought this was reasonable, and also there's, Mr. Graham can comment on that too. So that's basically what this sheet shows. It also shows the site distance that we have for a vehicle that comes out here in the site distance for any traffic coming down Tenny Street, there's over two hundred feet there. There was this discussion about the traffic situation here and obstacles, so, and we're proposing some signage here where we have a stop sign and, and a sign that says, basically a dead-end sign or a sign that, no exit. There's also signs coming down the street here that basically identify this as an intersection, Palmer Drive, and also there'd be a sign in this area here that says, if there's any queuing effect here, that's not to block the entrance. So that would allow openings here for anyone coming off a main street to, to get into the property, and there wouldn't be that much traffic going anyways, but if there was ever a situation there, the entrance wouldn't be blocked for traffic or emergency vehicles getting in and out. And I think Mr. Graham also mentioned in his letter about another sign here, but we can get into that another time. So I guess that covers a summary of, of that sheet. Next sheet is a landscaping plan. What we did here, we took a look at the significant trees that are near to where we have our limit of disturbance around the development. And we located all the significant trees in that area, in those areas that hopefully will be saved, and that's what our intent is here, and with a note on the plan that basically says all significant trees that were surveyed, located along the edge of disturbance line, and that the contractor shall retain as many of those trees as possible, and not to remove any beyond that edge of cut line. So sometimes there are trees that are so big that they're, they'd be harmful to a new home, and sometimes within that area, they would have to be removed for, for safety and insurance purposes. But by and large, we're gonna hope to try to save all of those trees around there and not cut anything beyond that. We're also showing proposed trees, those are identified along the, the street, and those would be proposed to be at least two-inch caliber, and we've identified those to be sunset maple trees. And we can talk about that more sometime, sometime in the future. We also, that covers, basically covers that sheet. Around the homes, we've kinda left that for each homeowner, whatever they wanted to put in for, for vegetation around there, around their homes. Detail sheets, erosion sediment control, construction sequence, typical details, don't need to go into that too much. Then sheet nine, more details, roof drainage, driveway infiltration trenches, cross-sections of the detention area and infiltration area. More details about a drainage, curvings, whatnot, and typical roadway cross-section. I was quick, told you I'd be quick. So, I mean, at this point in time, I was hoping to at least get through, to get some feedback from the board, but you're telling me you don't wanna do anymore tonight?
Not tonight, but I would like to go to the public and see if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak. Could you just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, Steve Rando, I'm on a butter at two hundred East Main Street, and it's my wife and I that requested the sixty-foot no-cut zone. We've been up there for almost twenty-five years, we've had a great deal of privacy. That was our reason for requesting the sixty-foot no-cut zone, so if at all possible, we would like to continue forward with that request.
Okay.
A thirty, a thirty-foot no-cut zone and a sixty-foot no-build zone, doesn't do it for us, we'd like to stay with the sixty-foot no-cut zone.
Understood.
Thank you, panel.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Just a general question here, the gentleman mentioned these two-inch trees he's gonna put in. Those'll be what, three, four-foot height or something?
Yeah.
That's pretty small, it'd be nice if you could up that just a little bit, maybe three, three and a half.
Well, depending on the, on the tree edge.
Yeah.
That'll be a, that'll be taller than the three or four-foot tree.
We'll get to that when we review the plans. Anyone else from the public? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a couple of comments. Earlier this evening, I think the board is aware that we met with the Historic Commission regarding the demolition delay ordinance on the house, which the commission decided to invoke, so that the demolition delay will be in place on the house, but they did allow the removal of the barn and the garage to facilitate the roadway. In reference to the pet burial area that Dennis had talked about, in speaking with the resident that, brought that up at the preliminary meeting, we did walk around out there. I don't know if that location is actually accurate, but in the, she wasn't a hundred percent sure, no, thank. She, she actually showed me where she thought some of the, the pet remains might have been, and she understood that if. And she understood that if we needed to, um, we, we needed to do what we needed to do. But we told her we'd try to be sensitive to the fact that if we found anything, we'd try to address it accordingly, just for the record. So that if that area changes or something, I just want to make sure that, um, state, didn't state anything.
Yeah, the, that's correct. Uh, one thing that.
Now, now understand everyone that we're just accepting this information tonight. So all these comments, we're going to get into at another meeting. So just want to.
The Blanchard's in, just so you folks know, there is like a half a dozen, uh, pets or something that had died over the years. So that she was concerned, uh, that, you know, we keep an eye on that site or perhaps don't dig it all up in terms of its landscaping.
Okay. Was there anyone else from the public that wanted to, anything? Okay, Larry, I don't, I don't think I wanted to go through the report at all, um, but, uh, we got it. And, um, unless there's anything in particular that jumps out at you that you want to put on the table.
He has it too, Steve has it.
So we're all, so we're, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if it's all right, uh, for me to address his comments?
No, thank you.
No, 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 not tonight, but between now and next meeting, I can try to incorporate his, his, his comments into the plan?
If you want to do that and get a set of revised documents responding to his comments, I suppose you.
A lot of us are drafting things, so obviously there's something I can't.
If you want to do that and, and submit a revised set with enough time, you know, so it gets into our packets by the next time.
But I just didn't want to wait and not do anything. If I can work with Mr. Graham over the next few weeks or months.
I just said what you could do.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, I think, uh, that's it. So, uh, can we continue this hearing?
To next week, next meeting or?
The agenda, Andrea, for the next is Chaplain Hills and? So, um, do we have, so I would say then that the twenty-third would be the next. That would make sense.
I think you continued, uh, chapter fifty-seven to the twenty-third, as I heard, Rob.
Oh.
We did.
So that's to the twenty-third. Okay.
And I think all we're talking about for healthy farms is the, uh, conditions, so that should be.
That should be pretty straightforward.
Do you want to do that?
Sure.
Any direction?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, make a motion to continue the public hearing on, uh, number two Tenny Street to, uh, March ninth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing for two Tenny Street to March ninth, two thousand sixteen. Any discussion? No discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, could someone text, send a little post there, Harry?
It's a residential ninety days. State submission.
Was it me or was he? I keep asking this. All right.
Let's, we'll take that, yeah, keep, down here.
We're just, we're, we're going to wait till, um, Harry makes it back up. Okay. Yeah, okay, just five minutes.
Eighty days after such submission, so.
I don't think people understand the challenges. What's the, what's the process, I just know here, last meeting, sorry, I predicted, what's the what? The process, uh, replacement of, uh, for the replacement of, what are we doing to replace it? So we have a, a, uh, oh, that's out. We waited here, uh, Mike Farrell will, uh, parrot now to, uh, to the first party. And to, to, like, two people from here, and, 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 I think, one person, uh, person, that, 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 uh, come.
Has reviewed it, to the extent there were to be a default by the developer or a failure to complete. The towns unable to actually secure the funds from the bank um and have those improvements completed. Um, so that's basically the tripartite. Then with regard to the release, we had submitted a release to actually release all the lots, because that would be the normal process. But because of the um, the requirement for the inclusionary housing, the board had asked that we only go up to the tenth lot um until we actually have the town accept that deed for forty-four zero. Um, we did deliver the deed to attorney Eichmann as well as to um, Mr. Farrell for approval. So this, I see odd look from Mrs. Vangelis. Do you remember how we were gonna actually sell to the?
I didn't get the.
Well, the deed.
Rewritten tripart. I only got the.
Oh, yeah, that was sent out by Jonathan.
Oh, that's.
A while ago.
No, that was sent to my tran- my transmission to you was then copied to the board.
Right.
The last, that would, that would be what the board received.
Right, that's, those are the changes to the tripartite.
For the last meeting.
No, the one recently, like last week, um attorney Eichmann and I had gone through the tripartite and he had made changes. And those changes were sent back to the board and approved by Mister, by attorney Eichmann.
Now, those, those.
Yeah, copies of those.
Okay, so the, 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 the full tripartite agreement, um. I don't recall, it's not saying, that's not saying I wasn't copied on the full one.
I just only have this two, because I just, I thought you all had it.
Thank you.
I don't have the marked ones, but that is what Mister Eichmann.
Yeah, I can take a quick look.
I'll have another one now.
Certainly, this is nothing about to you, but I don't, I didn't receive it. I don't know.
I, I didn't get it either.
Didn't, and, and um, what I think, um, what I think uh, Mister Eichmann's referring to is his, wish I had that, his comments to Jill's comments, there was some emails that went back and forth. And I was copied on those. And the last one that I saw in that was, was John's comment saying, I have no problem with those or something to that effect. And the final ones, it was a tweet, but I don't, and maybe it was in that, John.
That was last week, I would say about maybe Thursday approximately.
Actually Wednesday.
Wednesday.
But I, but I, but I don't.
How different is this new corrected version from the version that we had at our last meeting? That was the corrected one.
So what I did was when I got, I had just seen this within, you know, the last seven or eight days, I saw that last week. I used um, terms that I'm more comfortable with. I believe that Jill's original version was taken from what she submits generally to Middleton, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
So I tweaked that, so I was comfortable with what it said. The substantial terms of this are the same essentially. I added some more protective language, but the bank was fine with that. So I'm just checking now, this is the signed one, which I haven't seen. Just making sure this lines up with what the comments I sent to Rob. And it's, so far as I could see, it does.
So the comments that you sent to me um, were, it was just comments about the changes, but it wasn't the whole tripartite agreement, correct?
It was attached as a document.
The whole was attached as a document?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I could see it, that's why.
Yeah.
You can talk about that one, they didn't send it away.
What?
Why wasn't your communication sent to the board?
Because it was copied to me and I was watching communications going back and forth that they were working on something. There was nothing to send. I'm not gonna copy the board on information that I'm getting copied to that isn't.
Well, then you could've sent it to Adrian. She could've sent it like she does her packet.
And I felt the same way as Rob, that it was back and forth conversation, it wasn't clear at all.
It wasn't resolved, it wasn't clear, and I'm not gonna send out stuff that's not resolved and not clear. That doesn't make any sense.
At that, at that point, it still had to be finally approved by the bank. That was where the email chain dropped off. We did, this is the first time we're basically saying, yeah, it's signed by the bank, it's approved. And they've signed it, so what I'm checking to see is if that's what I approve, then I'm fine with it. And I think it's gonna be that, I mean, so far it is.
And I, I think, I think I haven't seen the signed one either. And my point, I guess then, is what is to reiterate what John's saying, is that the board's gonna be in a position tonight and it's up to the board. So we have not seen the final one signed, and John's reviewing that now. And if John says it's good to go in his mind, as one board member, I'm gonna be fine with it. But that's just me.
Can I ask John some questions?
Please.
Sure.
When I think of a bond, I think of a situation where developer basically goes away, they disappear tomorrow, they fall off the face of the earth, they file chapter seven, whatever it is. The bond is still there to protect the town. If developer falls off the face of the earth tomorrow, files chapter seven, does this protect the town?
That's what it's designed to do, yes.
That didn't actually answer my question though, did it?
Will we get first dibs? That's what I was wondering.
No, it, it works the same. Actually, this is better in my estimation than a bond. Um, you have a local bank holding this money essentially as an escrow agent. A certain amount of money that's designated here, five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. This agreement says we will hold this money as security for all the improvements shown in the plan. If they're properly constructing, the planning board tells us, money goes back to the developer. If it's not properly constructed, the planning board notifies us, it's not timely and properly constructive, we will release the money to the planning board to complete it.
But whose asset is that? Is that the bank's asset or is that the developer's asset?
Well, it's a three-party agreement, so right now, three parties have rights to that asset.
Okay, so in a, for example, in a chapter seven, is the trustee gonna come in and say that this is a general asset of the, of, of the estate? And it's gonna be distributed to creditors generally, or is it gonna be something that we're gonna have first dibs on?
Chapter seven, um, I can't answer for what a trustee would do with that, I mean.
Cause like a bond, for example.
I, I understand, right.
The trustee wouldn't have any, any, any rights to that, any recourse to that.
Correct. Right.
Basically, a we first in line.
Right, and I, the other, the problem though, that you're gonna have here, regardless of my answer, is that we as a board don't have the right to say, we don't like the tripartite, we want a bond.
Okay, we don't have that right?
Don't have that right.
Okay, so this is, this is one of their available options, remedies, and we have to accept it, if that's what they choose.
We have a bylaw here, where does this come to play?
Which one is it?
Release of lots of security. An amount of money to be determined by the board, but not less than ten dollars for linear foot.
Right.
Of roadway, shall we deposit it in a savings account in a bank in Georgetown? In the name of the town for a period of one year after release of all lots. And until road is accepted by vote of town meeting to cover repairs.
That's essentially what this is, correct?
Well, can I see that?
Sure.
Uh, I just wanna make sure that this is actually release of lots or security, um.
Titled.
I see that. Just let me read it, um. Right, this is actually, but that's, that's talking about, a separate, right, after the subdivision is closed out, it's talking about a separate amount of money. It's kept to make sure that the improvements are complete and they're good for a year later. So this is security to make sure that the improvements are actually completed as required under the bylaw. Then there's an additional one-year period that the bylaw attacks on, that says we wanna hold a certain amount of money past that point.
So he doesn't do the top coat and all the other.
That's what this is to cover.
If he doesn't do that, he will never get this.
Right, and you won't even get there.
We won't even get to that stage.
Exactly.
Well, in theory, if he says he's not gonna do that, we can pass the bank for the money and they just give us the money so we can do it.
Right, and just so we're clear here, what, what the law allows you to do, the law says the planning board determines what's appropriate in terms of the amount. And that the form of this is appropriate, that this adequately protects the town. But as to the type, there are three different types, they're allowed by law monetary security. One is a bond, one is a deposit, and one is a tripartite agreement. So, and the developer can select which of the types they wanna use. And they've selected this, so the question for the board is, is this in appropriate form? You've asked me to review it. I believe this is in appropriate form, in my opinion. The question now is, is the amount appropriate? And you've got your consulting engineer saying, that's an appropriate amount, as Jill said, times two, but that's up to him and you. So I think this is in, this, this form is fine. I did review it, it has all my changes in it. I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Did, did, did you have anything else that you wanted?
No, no, this, this is, Jill gave this to me, so, did you wanna?
Or is it another discussion?
Long-term, yes.
It's another discussion about the.
Yeah, I gave you the book back.
Okay, so.
I thought I had one of these.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to um, accept the tripartite agreement and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and it's been seconded to uh, accept and authorize, accept the tripartite agreement as submitted uh, by the applicant. And authorize the chairman of the board for signature. Um, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do that now, here? Who's the notary?
I.
You are, surprise. Oh, that's right.
Andrew's got two.
All right, three.
You have to be right now.
Is there, I don't, how many places for signatures?
Just one. Oh, you know why? Because.
I'm seeing two.
Because it's counterparts. Tom signed it one, um, original and um, the bank signed one original, that's why.
Is that an original?
One of them, you have two in front of you, I don't know which one's the original.
So he's the original? Either one with the um.
I can't, I, I could, I could see it if I looked at them.
You can feel the stamp.
You can, you can.
It's embossed, it's embossed, okay, so this is.
I think that one is.
They always got the original?
I think so.
Yeah, I purposely gave you, um, and that one has the actual bond attached to it, so.
That's it.
This is it.
Thank you very much.
Can we get a PDF copy of that?
You always do.
I lost it.
You always do.
Can, can, can we all?
Can, can we get a PDF copy of that?
Well, you have to understand, if this, we, we, we tried. It's just, you know, with Howard gone, I'm not supposed to communicate with you directly.
Well, I need to get one for the file too.
You can get, oh, you always will.
Jill, you just executed one original, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll send him around.
So now there are two places for signatures, for me.
Only because it's two, it's counterparts, you just have to sign one.
They sign separate sheets, one was signed by the bank, one was signed by.
Does it matter which one I sign?
No, not at all, whichever one you feel like signing, go for it.
All right.
The whole's recorded at the registry.
The tripartite? No.
Yeah. So can I get a copy of that in PDF?
Of course you can.
You said that, I believe.
Why don't you?
I thought I heard it somewhere.
Why don't you get a copy of it?
Yeah, maybe somebody could send me one of those.
Just send one to her and not, not to us. Jill sent it out to us.
Andrea would like one.
I always send them.
So you've got, you'll be, you'll be expecting that, Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay.
John, John, I'll send you one as well.
Fine, thanks.
In that same bylaw up at the top.
The outstanding issue was what, the fractional payment issue?
Well, actually, we just need to execute the release for the, the three lots. So what I, what I hadn't, what I had sent to you was the request for release. Because we can do three lots, what I had asked for was a request for a release of lot three and lot A, which is forty-four zero. So that I can transfer to the town that affordable. Um, and then I have a blank Form K that I would love for Andrea to hold. Because we don't know which of the next two lots are going to be the next to be sold. So instead of having, like, if it happens that, oh, we can, you know, we have somebody who wants to buy something, we'd love for her to hold it. And then we'll, we'll inform the board which two lots were taken.
Because of the situation that we're in right now, um, instead of having Andrea be responsible for this, can't you just, when it's ready, send us the one that has the lot numbers in it that you need?
It, but, I can, but the problem is then, when will you actually sign it?
At the meeting.
At the, at the next meeting. I'm just.
To get it in the packet ahead of time.
Yeah.
That's the best.
I, I, I'm just, I, I just wanna limit as much as possible, um, items for her to be responsible for.
I can, so I can get it signed, it's just a matter of it being signed. I don't have to go and come back and get approval. I can just send it in and get it.
You can send, then, then it'll come to the meeting and then we'll.
The only reason is we're releasing all, we're releasing up to ten now. I was just trying to expedite it, to be quite frank. Yeah, that's all. So like, I don't mind, I don't mind presenting again to have it signed, I just didn't wanna have to go through an entire permit, you know, process again. And potentially sit through, you, you know, meeting for it if we're already.
I think, I think we get it, uh.
Is, is it fair, is it, is it fair to say that the board, um, when Jill comes back with those, that we are prepared to sign that at that point?
Well, I think so.
I didn't, is she, you asking for any more releases?
Not right now.
Yes.
Only three.
Three in lot, lot three and lot nine.
I'm not comfortable with that forty-fourth Earl Street, it's all completed.
Well, that's not, the forty, if I did, if forty-four zero was all completed, I could get up to fifteen. Uh, but if, because forty-four zero isn't completed, I'm only asking for three additional.
But you were supposed to have it between seven and eight, you were supposed to have one.
No, between ten and fifteen, when I, my eleventh, absolutely, I apologize, Mrs. Vangelista, but I definitely write, it's at eleven. Mister LaCattilia actually confirmed that the last time as well.
Yeah.
It was the seventh that I had to deliver a tripartite.
Which you did.
And I did.
Security, yeah.
And then, but on the eleventh, before I can get the eleventh, I have to demonstrate that I've transferred the, um, the, the affordable. And attorney Eichmann is actually in the process of working with DHCD, which I don't control. But I delivered the deed to attorney Eichmann, I don't know, I think, is there an affordable housing trust meeting? Ha- Howard had told me, so that he's going to discuss the deed.
March second, did you? I don't know if it's on their agenda.
Right.
Second, and it, I don't know if they're on the agenda, if you're on the agenda, but yes.
I thought Howard said, and I didn't know, are you communicating with them about the deed? Cause I did send it to, to Jonathan, I thought that was most of the.
For the reference, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. I didn't mean to talk over you about.
No, don't worry about it.
Um, on page four of the decision, which was included in our package, um, uh, one, one B. Talks about that, that, she's correct, it's the eleventh unit that requires the.
I see that now.
Um.
Stand corrected.
So it is, it is March second, that is that meeting. But I don't know who's.
Lots have been released to this point.
Eight.
Yeah.
I see, and so the request is.
No, it, it's seven, seven, you didn't get the eight.
Now, this is the eight, nine, ten, yeah.
So the request now is to release eight, nine, and ten. Do they include any of the affordable lots, did you say?
One of them, which is why it's eight, nine, ten, and A, because the affordable lot was never part of the twenty-two that would be released.
But it was under covenant.
But, we, of course we did, because we didn't know what was gonna be included, so we didn't, we had to include them all. So, do you mind if I just explain to attorney Eichmann? So what I, okay.
No, good.
So that's why, so we do have forty-four zero on, because Mister LaCattilia actually even brought it up that, you know, no matter what, even if it had frontage, it still is part of the covenants, and we had to release it to be able to convey to the town.
No, that, that makes sense, so just, but so I understand, but the eleventh lot is what triggers, that, the first unit has to be under a deed rider at that point before you can release lot number eleven.
Well, I don't know that it has to be under a deed rider, it has to have conveyed it to the trust, because I have no ability to control the process that the town is going through, so I'm deeding it over, I have to sell it to the town for one ninety-eight, four hundred.
No, I understand, I've just, the, the, the bylaws would suggest that it, it's gotta be under a deed rider at that point.
Right, but when we did our decision to modify, we had to transfer and sell it to the trust, and I can't, I mean, I, I have to tell you, I think it would be not necessarily reasonable to require us to wait for the town to complete its, its deed rider obligation if we actually convey to the town for the one ninety-eight four. Because what the term of the decision was, is we're conveying to you an affordable unit. It's, it's really, it's a process that the town has to complete and get everything done and put it on. We're giving it to you for the affordable price.
Yeah, I, I think the obligation on the bylaws is asking the developer to make sure that's done.
It isn't, because I tried to do it, and I was not allowed to do it.
Well, again, uh, we can look at that amended decision, but um, you know, that's, that's the way I read it also. You know, the other thing is, it's one thing to convey to the town, but it doesn't become an affordable unit, obviously, until DHCD approves that deed rider.
Right, but the town has the control over that, and that was, that what our obligation was, and.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't, I mean, I don't know what DHCD, DHCD is gonna say. We'll, we'll check with them, where are you at with this? And we'll figure out where they are. I mean, it shouldn't be a complicated process, but again, I don't, I can't recommend to the board that they release the eleventh lot. If DHCD hasn't signed off on that yet, because we don't know what the result will be, so.
Mister Chairman, and not to cut you off, John, but, um, I, I'm looking at a Form K, partial release of covenant. It talks about, um, lot three.
Yeah.
Not lots, lot three and lot A, which is forty-four zero. And I'm comfortable releasing those two from covenant tonight, but still before the eleven.
Well, that's what I.
We have the tripartite. If we can, if, if you'll accept the motion to um, uh, accept the Form K, partial release of covenant for lots three and lot A.
Just those two.
But that's my motion.
Okay. I wanna make sure I understand what you're asking for. You, you're asking us to sign, essentially sign this in blank, we just develop it on those two lots when the two lots are identified.
I, I did, but I do understand Mister Hoover's point that, you know what, that I put an administrative burden on you to have to track signed documents, so I understand. And all I would ask is if the board were then to say, you know, look, it'll be, it, we understand that it's gonna be the release of three real lots. And you just have to come back next time and get the signed one, because it's not fair to have us.
Can I get a second for my motion? No, nobody.
Oh, that's second, sure. Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded to approve the release, partial release of covenant for lots three and lot four. Which is all, I mean, lot A. Um, discussion. The, the, and what I hear, and what I'm hearing on this other one, that by signing these, this one, that we're also agreeing that on this blank one, that we're, that you're just gonna come back and we're just gonna, yes, we're committing to signing it now. But that would kick us over.
No, it does not kick us over, it stays under.
My motion is to approve the release of two lots right now.
Right now, that's.
Lot three and lot A.
That's it. Okay, okay.
So my question is, how many lots will be released if we approve that?
If we approve that, we will be up to nine.
Okay.
No, eight.
Oh, okay.
Eight.
Eight.
You don't include the affordable, you don't. You don't.
Okay, so.
See, you've gotta have, you, you've gotta agree with her on this, because when we fought about the affordable housing, you agreed with her on that, at that point. So you have to agree with her at that point, on this point now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll concede that forty-four is part of covenant, and it has to be released.
So, any more discussion? Uh, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? So four yes, one no, um.
Main thing is we're not at eleven yet.
So.
That's the main.
We need to sign, where, where's the original that we're using for that?
It, it's just in your package, there was no, you, you will, you will create the original.
I'm just able, can I use yours?
Use it's own, all right, go for it.
And we will get a copy of that, please?
Yeah, and it'll, you'll get a copy of it when recorded.
Is there a way, um, I think the people that are purchasing lot three are looking for, trying to get their building permit signed off. And I think with Howard out, um, is there a way maybe we can release Andrea to maybe sign off on the building permit application now that lot's been released?
Is that the Tony Francioso person?
Um, it's Imbriano, Christina, and some, lot three.
I, I thi- I, I think what I'd like to do is stick to the agenda item tonight.
Sorry.
No, that's all right, but it's just, it's late, and um, so let's finish with this agenda here. So what was left? It was the.
Just with the remaining two, the, we can have under the decision. For your, you know, the, the release would be applicable to, up to the tenth.
And is that, does that sound reasonable to you?
Well, I'm not sure what I'm hearing yet, so we released two lots.
That's why I was trying to.
What lots don't wanna release?
No other motion now at the front, in front of the board, so.
But I asked for it, so my, my actual request was that, so we don't, it's very difficult for us to know what the next two lots are. And we don't wanna just give them out in, until we know which ones we're going to release. So the point from Tom was, look at, let's do lot three, cause we know we're selling that in lot A, so we can sell it to the town. And there are two more, and we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're entitled to up to ten. So if we could just get the board to say, yeah, you're entitled to two more, understanding that there's nobody to hold a signed decision until I can fill in the two lots.
So if they're providing a tripartite agreement for the entire cost of development, they would, other than for the conditions on your permit, would be entitled to release them all the lots. That's how that works, but you've got conditions here, so I think what, if I understand it right, you're asking for the board to vote now on a release of two other lots with the applicant to come back and tell you what lots those are at a subsequent date.
To be determined.
Right, is that?
That's absolutely a hundred percent, yeah.
What would be the harm for you to come back when, when you know which lots are gonna be?
She will, she will, but she's wanting.
I just wanted an expedited process, that's all.
To the additional two lots.
It's expedited as it's gonna get. I mean, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna send us something.
I, I think she doesn't wanna sit here for three hours.
Yeah, that's, honestly, that's kind of it.
Yeah, you don't have to be here, I mean.
I didn't, that's.
Is the board committing to that, those other two?
Fine.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
So is the board?
General consent.
The board wanna? Board wanna vote on that? Wanna make it official?
Why don't you ask if anybody has an objection to it?
I object to it, I tell you. I'll put the no vote here.
Ask if anybody else has an objection.
Time.
What I would suggest is that they're just, the next time they bring this forward, we just have them, the first thing on the agenda, because.
Ministerial.
Just do it.
Do it with the vouchers.
All right, I, 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 I will remember this, I will remember this, I will remember this conversation. And I will remember that they have tried to, you know, not sit here for two hours. And what I don't wanna have happen is to have this come back to the board and have us have a forty-five minute discussion of this thing.
This is a piece of cake.
That's what I want, well, I'm gonna remember that, okay? All right, so I guess that's it.
And did you wanna, I hate to say it, did you wanna talk about fractional payment? Cause that is, I have to pay the fractional payment before I can get the eleventh.
Eleven.
This, this, this was Howard's suggestion. Um, his suggestion was to, and this is for the board, if the board's in agreement with it. Um, was for the, for you to find out from the affordable housing in their March second meeting, what they would determine being, what they would determine as the fractional payment, and whatever they determine, the planning board would agree with. But this is up to the planning board.
Well, that's why I wanted to talk to you about it first, yeah.
Understand.
I wouldn't be comfortable with that, no.
All right.
I, I don't, to delegate my decision, my decision to.
I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Hear what they had to say, but.
Okay, I'm just asking, just trying to find a way to activate it happen, okay?
I mean, I wouldn't mind hearing from the developer either, what they recommend, but.
It's only, I have to be honest with you, it's, it's very difficult to interpret your bylaw, because we're being asked to make a fractional payment, not every time we sell a lot. But we're being asked to make the entire fractional payment on the sale of the eleventh lot. Unfortunately, your bylaw says that we pay to you the average fair market value of all lots sold. Well, it's impossible to tell me you that, other than, I don't have it, so, you know, and.
Oh, units sold.
Well, oh, gosh, you know what? We already went through that once, so it's a very difficult formula, so how do, how do, how do we know?
You're in a tough spot now, you guys.
We are, so even if we, even if we.
You have eight units.
Right, but if I, if I base them on that average, are you going to be happy? Or if I, you know, if, if, if the price goes up, what are you going to do? If the price goes down, what do you do? So, you know, it's, I mean, I think we're willing to say, okay, look, this'll be it, but is the board willing? See, and that's the catch twenty-two.
My only, my only two cents on this as one board member is, I, I, I um, would lean towards the, to the trust. Um, and I, I know you have, and I understand that, but I don't plead, I, I, I plead, I'm not up to speed um, in the way I am with other things with regards to this issue, and the Affordable Housing Trust, I think has a lot more um, experience. and the Affordable Housing Trust, I think has a lot more, um, experience, knowledge of this one than I do.
Well, I'm not either, so he's not alone, because I just feel like we still haven't cleared up one affordable house, now you're going to allow something else? I mean, we've been, we've been bending over for this subdivision since it started, and, and we finalized a decision, they want to come in and waive it, and, you know, when is this going to end?
This is wrong.
They're not asking for any changes here, Julie.
We're asking for you to tell us how much to pay you.
Could, could I ask a question?
I want to see the second affordable house, where's the second?
Could I ask a factual question, that maybe the facts aren't out there, I don't know? Have, have the houses been built there, how many are built of the?
Two, three?
Two, three, six.
Completely built or under construction?
Well, under construction.
And then the affordable, we, we have the final plans, so we're, we have the, um, we submitted our regulatory agreement and our application for getting our final, our deed rider on that home, for the nineteen, for the second lot.
Have, have any of them, um, been assessed by the assessor yet?
No.
No?
No, it was all, it's still.
They were sold as unapproved lots?
Yeah, so we, we sold them, and, and they hadn't been, you know, they hadn't gone through the June, so they didn't grab it from the assessor. I, I looked the other day and tried to get some, and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so I, I couldn't do it.
When we had the, the issue.
We, we tried to do that, Jonathan and I even talked about it on the phone.
We had an issue with this, with Emma Harris' way, what we did was, um, we picked a number, because the, our concern was that the houses, the, the lots would be sold, and that would drive down the average from, if a built home was sold, and.
Would you consider a, a high-low agreement, where we base it on a, you know, the average of sales, and say that if it goes above this number for the future lots, that you would kick in some more, and if it doesn't, then that's the full payment?
Now they get a one-time shot.
We actually, actually discussed an escrow agreement, which would work that way, essentially money would be placed in escrow, and it would go up or down, money would go one way or the other, depending on what happened when all the lots were done, were sold and assessed.
Yes, if it was actually, you know, a high-low, a high-low where we, so, just for argument's sake, say the money is thirty thousand, only because my mind works easier for that, or ma, make it twenty-two thousand, because it's a thousand per, so if we put twenty-two thousand in, and the average was supposed to be a thousand per lot, fine, but if after we sell the twelve, thirteen, fourteen, one of the lots is supposed to be twelve hundred, you know, we keep maybe, um, a quarter of the payment in, and it, it would be released to the town, and if it ends up being twelve hundred, we have to kick more, yeah, yeah, we'd be willing to do it.
The only problem with an escrow account is that the Affordable Housing Trust doesn't have use of the money.
No, it does not.
But with a high-low, but with a high-low, we would, because the low would be guaranteed, and it wouldn't go below that number, so that, up to that.
Well, we wouldn't agree to a high, we, we would agree to, I thought you meant, if it's a positive high of a low, I mean, we're not going to agree to a high-low. If, if we're going to say to you, you can get all the benefit of any appreciation, then we are also going to say that we get the benefit of any depreciation.
What I mean is a floor and a ceiling, so, you know, if, if the number should be twelve, and we say the low is ten, and the high is fifteen, for example, and I'm just using.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. I have never thought about that.
I don't know what council would think about something like that.
I don't know how that, I, I, I don't know if that's.
I don't know you, I don't know if you have authority to basically pick a high and lows, when the bylaw is saying you got to take the average of them.
On the lots.
That's my thought, too.
We can waive anything, with the planning board.
Do we, do we, do we have to resolve this tonight?
No, I did, I only brought it up because I know I, Howard had told me about the affordable, and I wanted to be able, I didn't want to go to them and kind of like not get your input, that, that was, because I don't want to have that process again.
Maybe we can get the wisdom of the, the Affordable Housing Trust, and that'll help clarify all our thoughts.
Well, it certainly helps with the question of, you know, if they want the money readily available, you know, then that's something that we have to work. I don't think all the money, if we're going to have some, you know, the money going both ways, we obviously, once we get it, we can't give it back, there's not, not going to be any provision for that. Just municipal finance, we're not going to be able to do it, so there's going to have to be some money still held in escrow, so that we can take care of swings one way or another, but we may be able to get some money released to the Housing Trust through that agreement.
Oh, I mean, you easily have, right, because we've, we will have sold half.
So who, so who, whose responsibility would it be to attend the, uh, trust meeting and get this information?
Matt.
Yes.
Would you, we, I'd love it if you did, because Howard's not there anymore.
When is the next trust meeting?
March second, right?
That's what you, Rob, you had said that at play.
I, please verify that. I'm, I'm not.
I'm pretty confident it is, because March first is the vote, so it can't be, and so they think they defaulted to the, to the second.
So have you plans for the second house yet, or not?
Yes, as I said, we do.
So that will take care of that.
Yes.
Done.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you, Jonathan, it's nice to meet you.
Thanks for staying. Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Nope, cannot, we have, uh, we have planning office item, and, um, it's the last item, and, um, I guess, uh, assuming we can, and I'm going to ask Andrea the answer to this question, upon council's advice, we've been, uh, it's been recommended to continue, Form D certificate approval to our next meeting, um.
What is certificate approval?
I'm sorry, I'm, I've lost my agenda. Form D, uh, for preliminary approval of Bailey Lane, it was just signing, um, that document, the Form D document. But, um, so as I said, upon council's advice, uh, to, if we can, because we have time with the schedule, so what?
The file is a little scarce, but on Howard's calendar, we do say Bailey, um, Form H ends tonight.
It's all right.
Form H ends tonight.
Yeah, they didn't give us an extension to the end of the quarter, they only.
And I don't have it in the file to, to, to actually show you.
We don't know when the date.
I, I have the filing dates.
I, I, I concur, I just specifically remember you asking until the end of March, and they said, they, they would not say no until.
This is, so maybe a little discussion on this, uh, the, that was for an OSRD special permit, was it not?
Exactly.
And when did you close the public hearing and vote on that?
Our last meeting, I believe.
At our last meeting.
The last planning board meeting? Trying to remember.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does everybody, you guys remember that? Glad you do, I don't, okay.
Two weeks ago.
I mean, obviously. I'm, I'm a little unsure about what that extension actually means, because as we talked about before, with a special permit, by law, once the public meeting is closed, you have ninety days in which to file your decision, take a vote and file your decision, so if you just did that last week, I don't think that, again, not having, you know, we don't have all the dates yet, but that suggests that you have more than just tonight. And in fact, if that was to basically bind you, we have a problem right now, because we can't file anything with the town clerk tonight. Tonight's it, that's an issue. So, um, Rob and I had discussed, you know, some question about the quantum of vote that I wanted to flesh out a little more before any decision was made on this, because there was a three to one vote. So I wanted to make sure I knew what was actually being voted on, because I haven't actually seen this yet, so.
So that's for the continuing, so, um, it sounds like we continue it because it doesn't matter. It's like, if it's tonight, we've already lost that, and so we might just as well continue it and find out.
If it's truly a special permit, and you just closed the public hearing last week, it does not sound like you're in danger of constructive grant. But I would like to see, at least see the documents before.
What, what documents do you need with regards to that?
You're talking about Bailey Lane?
Uh, excuse me?
Yeah, well, number one, I want to know when the, the application was filed. And then want to know when the meeting, you know, indication of when the planning board closed the public hearing and when they voted.
The thing about that Bailey Lane one is that they submitted two applications. They did a preliminary OSRD.
Right.
And, and a regular subdivision. And both applications on the top of it says subdivision, right? And the date, we voted, as far as I can remember, we voted for the preliminary. We agreed that if the preliminary was set, and then he was going to follow definitively, right?
Correct.
But it's the special permit part that I'm worried about, not the, not the subdivision so much at this point.
Under the OSRD, the, the applicant is, is, um, the, the board tells the applicant which, which one it prefers, the, the conventional or the OSRD. And then the, then the applicant informs the board of which one it wishes to pursue.
Right.
They chose the OSRD.
Okay, and when did they make that choice?
That was the one prior to that.
No, last week.
That was last, that was last week.
Yeah, last, uh, last meeting.
I thought they, I thought they submitted the plans to us for that prior to that one, but check your minutes.
So, I'm sorry, repeat, please, again, what you need for information?
Just really the dates, the date of the filing, the date that, um, the determination was made that they want to proceed with the OSRD as opposed to the subdivision. And the date the board took a vote on that application.
That's where my question lies, did you get all that?
Yeah.
And I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see.
God bless you.
Yeah, I'd like to see what they submitted to, if I could.
Sure.
Their application.
The dates, that's the issue that, that I had. The date is stamped.
All right, with all of that said, folks.
At the planning office. We don't get it until maybe two weeks later.
What am I saying?
Isn't that the date when the planning board gets it? It should be stamped.